Call to order, the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for October 20th, 2021. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
And Commissioner Bennett is absent at the moment, but on his way.
Absent at the moment. He promises to show up. All right. What did we have here? Trent, yeah, my turn. If you'll follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First up is Public Communications. Time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Sherry, do we have anyone waiting? Okay, not waiting electronically. We do have one member in the audience live. Do you wish to speak, sir?
I do not. I do.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to the consent item. Item one, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, October 6th. Any refinements asked for by any commissioners? I wanted to personally thank Sherry for doing such detailed minutes. It was...I could read them and remember the whole meeting.
I have two comments.
Yes, ma'am.
On page, it's, they're both on page four of seven. And just, let's see, so the first were, I think they were just comments by the commissioners at the top. The last bullet under my comments, it doesn't exactly, I'm not sure what it actually says, but I think my intention was, I was just making a comment that beer and wine alcohol beverage sales is allowed without, as a permitted use, not a conditional use permit in the zone. So, and it was just more of a policy comment. So I think I would prefer to just have that last bullet taken off or restated, so.
Okay, and how would you restate it? I agree with you that alcohol sales, onsite sales inside the building for sure, maybe outside, I'm not sure, is a ministerial decision. So it can be made by staff without referring to the Planning Commission.
Right. I mean, that was my, my memory is that that's what I was trying to say. I may not have said it clearly, but it was just a comment that, that actually is pretty unusual in most communities, but that's the way it is in Ojai. That's a permitted use. The alcohol and beverage sales is a permitted use in the C1 zone.
Yeah. So you would, you would ask to remove that last bullet?
I think I'd prefer that rather than try to restate it, really.
Okay. Any objections to other commissioners?
Oh, yeah.
All right, then could we have a motion on the minutes?
Well, I had one other, just, so under commissioned deliberation, and again, it's my comment, the last bullet, it's toward the bottom of the page, and the comment is limit additional square footage by allowing outside service. I think it's, I think it would, I think my thought there was to limit additional square footage by not allowing additional outside service. I mean, because with, as the proposed expansion, we're allowing more area than was previously there. That's, I think that was the intent of that comment, so.
Not allowing, well.
By not allowing additional outside service.
I don't think the question was allowing or not allowing outside service unless you're talking strictly about alcohol.
Well, I was talking about, I was talking about, well, the expansion of alcohol use, that, but also the, the area and the amount of encroachment of the outside patio area, so to speak.
Okay, but you're, you're saying that last bullet would be accurate if not was inserted for allowing?
Yes, yes. By not allowing additional outside service.
Okay. Commissioner Trent, please.
Sorry, I was just moving my pencil around. I don't have a question. I'm good.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
Do we need to have a motion to make that amendment, then?
Well, I'll move to approve the minutes with the amendments as presented by myself.
That's correct. So, yes, the motion pending is a motion to approve the amendments with the amendments, a motion to approve the minutes with the amendments as articulated by Commissioner Lottis.
I didn't know if we needed two separate motions.
No, you can just do it in one motion.
All right. Is there a second to the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make the second motion, or that motion.
Very good. Okay. Any discussion? Sherry, call a roll, please.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is director's exemption and modification to minor conditional use permit at 423 East Ojai Avenue. Lucas, would you start us off there, please?
Yes, thank you. And actually, I've got Mara that's going to go through her presentation. She's got a little PowerPoint that she's going to run through as well with this presentation.
Okay.
She's going to share screen right now.
Okay, I was talking about this here. Thank you. I've gotten a lot of tutorials today on this little more advanced PowerPoint than I'm, so anyway, thank you very much. I'm Mara McAluso, Associate Planner, and yes, this is a request for director's exemption and modification to a minor conditional use permit to allow the sale and consumption of beer and wine within a proposed outdoor dining area fronting Ojai Avenue. And we've lost our presentation. It's not my fault. There we go. So the modification would be to a previously approved minor conditional use permit that was approved in 2006. And this approval request, or this request is also for an outdoor barrier for, for the outdoor alcohol, and that's per ABC requirements. So the Planning Commission considered this request on October 6th and continued it until tonight with direction to the applicant to provide a fully dimensioned and accurate plan and further explore outdoor dining on the eastern building frontage area where the sidewalk is wider. So the applicant resubmitted a site plan on October 14th, and the current, as well as the previous proposal, did not include an increased number of outdoor seats from what was approved in '06 for Jersey mikes, but does include, as presented previously, a reconfiguration, an expansion in the area, and also a change in material of the outdoor seating. The difference between the October 6th review and the current review is, is that there were originally two movable benches perpendicular to the wall of the building, and now there is one. There are still four tables proposed, however, the depth of two of the tables is over here.
Yeah.
Okay, going back and forth here. Two of the tables has been reduced to accommodate a three-foot access between the fence and the tables, as well as a minimum pedestrian travel between the fence and the eastern tree to five feet. So here's the three feet required pedestrian access on site or within the dining area, and here is that minimum five feet there between the tree well and the fence.
So we're still, we're still counting the, the edge of that grate, if a grate goes in there, as not walkable surface?
We are still measuring to the edge of the tree well. And at this time, there is not a grate in there. I believe at this time, there's some mulch in there that the Public Works Department has put in since the previous meeting at the request of the applicant. And a tree grate is something that is a potential for the future and would take some time because it would be specifically for that. It's not a standard size.
Yeah, so let's finish running through the presentation before, before questions.
Right.
Thank you. So the required path of travel for outdoor dining is generally four feet. That's here on site. However, it can be reduced to three feet with movable furniture, and these tables are movable, so therefore they can have an access of three feet, and that's what they're proposing. Consistent with the October 6th Planning Commission meeting review, the outdoor dining area is proposed to be partially enclosed by a 42-inch high fence structure designed to match the furniture. The fence would be open but roped off to indicate non-entry at the western end.
Mm-hmm.
Or here. The rope is proposed to be, as previously, quarter-inch vinyl coated galvanized steel cable with looped ends. The east end of the fence bends slightly toward the building just past and continues just past that eastern door, leaving a four-foot opening which is required by the ABC. When the commission reviewed the project on October 6th, the proposed configuration of the outdoor dining area with the barrier projected onto the sidewalk approximately seven feet, three inches, and reduced the public walkway from the originally approved seven foot, seven inches down to six feet. With the recent adjustments made to the outdoor dining area, the accuracy of measurements on the site plan, the outdoor dining area with the barrier still projects from the building seven feet, three inches at the most west end, but then it tapers as it travels east. See that there. Where the available sidewalk was five feet, four inches in the October 6th proposal, it's now five feet at the narrowest point, calling that a pinch point, at the eastern tree well. Other than that pinch point, the pedestrian access maintains a minimum of six feet and extends quite a bit above that as the path of sidewalk travels east. As a simple comparison, the approved configuration for Jersey mikes allowed for a projection onto the sidewalk of five feet, four inches, and allowed for a pedestrian walking path of seven feet, seven inches. Caltrans has a six-foot minimum required pedestrian, pedestrian access on the sidewalk that starts from curb toward the building. If the applicant encroaches into the six-feet Caltrans access, they'll need an approval from, from Caltrans through a encroachment permit. As proposed with this five-foot clear at the tree well, the applicant might be required to request an encroachment permit from Caltrans, and in your resolution, you'll see approval, condition of approval number nine that's included to address this potential encroachment permit. Staff had concerns related to pedestrian comfort and safety regarding the reduction of the walkway to the five feet at the tree well, the eastern tree well. However, staff is comfortable with recommending to move forward with the outdoor dining configuration, including this ABC barrier, because the reduction of the pedestrian pathway or pinch point is at one specific point here, and the applicant has made revisions to the plans to accommodate the minimum of six feet wide for the pedestrian pathway and greater, which is required by Caltrans for the rest of the split rail fence. So with that, staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions of approval that are in your packet, attachment A.
Very good, thank you.
And I see the applicant is here, and as well as myself, of course, for any questions.
Very good. Before we get to the applicant, are there any commissioners with questions for staff? I seem to recall from our last meeting, October 26th, I think it was, oh, October 6th, excuse me.
Can you see the raised hand? Chair Quilisi, Commissioner Lottis has her hand raised?
Ah, very good.
Oh, I know, the pictures are small.
We had the gallery squeezed into a small space. I couldn't see you. My apologies. Please.
I, I just wanted to ask, I don't think I remember talking about this the last time, but you know, the split rail fence clearly makes a delineation, but I, I feel that the partition rope, the roped partition is a little less structured. But, so why, what is, why are we doing the rope at the one end? Is there a reason for that?
The, sorry, the ABC requires that the area be closed off. They also require that, I don't think, actually, a doorway be within the roped-off area or closed-off area. However, that's the eastern door. I believe it's for access from employees. You know what, it's possible that it's better for the applicant to answer the question.
Okay, okay. That's all.
Okay. Vice Chair Nolan, any questions for staff?
Not at the moment. Thank you, Chair Quilisi.
Mr. Trent, any questions for staff?
Nope, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Just to make clear, I, I thought I heard at the last Planning Commission meeting that the Public Works Department had been contacted and had expressed a willingness to put a grate on that tree well to the eastern end. Is that correct?
I think at the last meeting, October 6th, I believe the applicant may have been the ones to, to inform you of that. They had had a conversation, more of a casual conversation.
Okay. My question is more appropriate for the applicant than then for staff, it sounds like.
It is an option, though.
Yeah. But you're now allowing the six-foot Caltrans from curb face inward toward the building as a walkway with that one pinch point which may be relieved with a grate. You are now recommending approval of this with the conditions as stated.
Correct.
Okay. I guess that's enough questions for staff, then. Let's hear from the applicant. Who's here to speak, please?
Hello, I'm Jeremy Albin, the owner of this space. Thanks for having us back. Happy to answer any and all questions regarding that space.
Okay, I, I thank you for giving us a, a scaled drawing that shows both the east and west faces of the building. That was certainly illuminating for me. And you have reduced the size of two of the tables.
Yes.
Is there, is there a reason, looking, looking, this is looking at the site plan, I guess it's page two, site plan with exterior seating. There's a large open space to the west of the end of that split rail fence. And I know from prior conversations, oh, and we forgot to do, I apologize to everyone, we forgot to do ex parte contacts. I've not had any since the last meeting, that I recall. Anyone else? Vice Chair Nolan?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I, I actually went back out to the site today, and one of the owners happened to walk up and was going in. I didn't discuss anything about this project, but the owner did allow me to go in and just showed me the interior.
Oh, very nice.
It was courtesy, but it didn't have anything to do with our present.
Sight drawing, the interior looks kind of plain. It's all white.
Worth it now.
Okay, well, thank you. I just noticed in this, in this drawing, the site plan where it says partition fence height forty inches and points sort of toward the eastern end of that fence, there's an awful lot of open space there. And I understand from our last conversation before the last meeting that the owner of the strip center doesn't want any tables up against that wall, but there's an awful lot of space there that might be used. Have you considered that?
Yeah, there's a couple of reasons why we considered it and didn't move in that direction. The first is that the utilities are there for the building, so if there was a fence in front of it, it would make it difficult to access. And as well, where we have the four-foot gap on the eastern end of the slope of the fence currently is where we're going to receive deliveries as well. And the more we block off that doorway, the harder it is for us to receive items, for the utility to be accessible, and that area as well. Yeah, there's a mailbox there. It's just more common use for the rest of the
That's true.
plaza than just our, our needs.
Okay, so you, you have slightly reduced the exterior seating?
Yes.
But otherwise complied with all the rules, it looks like. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
Yeah, I can answer Commissioner Lottis's question about the rope as well.
Yes, please. Commissioner Lottis?
I'll just speak on it. So the reason there's a rope on that side is threefold, I guess. The first reason is that it makes that side table more ADA accessible. If you need to exit that table, it's easy to remove that rope and allow someone who is in a wheelchair.
Easier than putting a fence there, you mean?
Exactly, yeah. The second reason is that it's a fire egress in case of any kind of emergency that's a removable barrier. And the third reason is that if staff needs to get in from that side, they are able to. But, yeah, just more egress and more flexibility, and the ABC wants, yeah, fire egress as well.
Wants something there.
Yeah. So we want to meet the requirement of the ABC, but still allow some flexibility in people getting in and out and serving people from that side.
Okay. Any, Vice Chair Nolan, please?
Yes, I have a question about the dining layout, the tables and the seating. And I was, I went back out to the site again today with my measuring tape and my packet in hand, and I realized you are clear of the required five feet by the City of Ojai, and, and just clear of the, you know, right to the six-foot Caltrans delineation. But my question is, did you ever consider having all of the tables be the fourteen inch by twenty-eight inch? And if you did that, would that greatly affect your, the amount of people you would be serving?
Yeah, so we decided to split the tables recently in the last, since the last meeting because we needed more of an egress to meet the thirty-six inch city requirement. And we realized also we couldn't have chairs on the northern facing side of those tables either, so it was, it didn't cut into the ability for people to dine while sitting facing north. The reason why we didn't change the other tables is that since there is that movable bench there, it can be put on, you know, either the eastern table or the western table, and it allows more room for an additional person to sit there and to have more table space. So if they were all shorter, it would, it would cut us down, I guess, from, I guess we're at, we're at one, two, through four, we're at eight now, eight to ten, and it would probably cut that into like six people. So it just allows us to maximize the amount of people we can have in that space and still be compliant.
The only reason I brought it up was, and I realized that you're within, you know, you've cleared the requirements, but it still feels a little tight. But if you did those half tables and did two half benches, I think you'd get the same amount of seating, but you'd actually gain the difference of, you know, like another fourteen inches within the barrier could be moved up a little bit. It may or may not be an issue, but I think let's go finish, a lot of the commissioners ask questions, and then we can come back to that.
Sure. Just to give some additional perspective, they're like, those tables were already fabricated, and we had them refabricated to be fourteen by twenty-eight instead of twenty-eight by twenty-eight, and they were $700 each to refabricate. So it's already been a significant expense to us to reformat this, so we're trying to limit our additional expenditures if we're in line with the code requirements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trent, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, no, no questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis, any comeback?
Yeah, we really haven't talked about the width of the split rail fence and the, and the size of the posts. Can the applicant say exactly what that size will be, what that dimension is? Are they, are the posts going to be, say, two by four?
Yeah, they're going to be two by four post rails with one by four width-wise pieces extending along the fence.
Okay. Is, are those, are the posts the reason that you might possibly have to do an encroachment for Caltrans?
We don't have to do an encroachment for Caltrans. We've spoken with them, and since we're within six feet or with, outside of six feet from the curb, they're not requesting that we submit an encroachment permit from them at this time.
Okay.
We'll get confirmation from that, but if they've already reached out to them.
Yeah.
We just need to get, either through an email or through some sort of official confirmation, yeah. We can get that.
Vice Chair Nolan, a question?
Yes, I had another question, and it was something that Chair Quilisi, you have brought up earlier, and this is in regards to the tree wells and potential tree grates. You know, it was interesting when I was out there, I observed that there was now a thin layer of mulch. Those trees are planted fairly high. In other words, it's not a great, a dip or a drop from the finished surface of the hardscape to the top of the soil. And the cutouts are actually fairly small. And so generally speaking, and, you know, I guess I could say this is my opinion, but others would agree, tree grates are not necessarily a beneficial thing for the trees, but in an application like this, it may be warranted. But I would say if in our discussion, we decide that tree grates may be necessary, they have to be ADA accessible, so that means that you can't have anything greater than a half-inch gap between the cutout, so to speak, and the grate. Of course, you can, there's all types of grates, you know, as far as being ornamental and what they're made out of. But I, because the cutout is actually small, and then the trunk diameter is, it's not huge, but it's decent. I didn't actually measure it, but did an observation. The grates would be fairly small, and you want to make sure there's an allowance for the trunk to expand.
Yeah.
There are companies that do have grates that allow for that, but I just wanted to throw that into the mix because it, it may be a good idea to do that on both of those tree wells, as much as I'm not a big.
As, as it stands, it sounds like the proposal is acceptable even if there's no grate in the tree well. Is that, is that right?
I guess that'd be a question for staff, you know.
Yeah, which would solve the problem of, of
Right.
harmful grates.
Yeah, okay. I think I'm just kind of tossing some things around, sorry.
Okay, I have, I have a question for the applicant. I, I thought I recalled from the previous meeting two weeks ago that you had two of those movable benches. Is that right?
Yeah.
So you may yet be able to use them sort of back to back? Or are you just holding one spare, or?
Yeah, we're just holding one spare now because it was obstructing that thirty-six inch walkway. So we just put it aside.
Yeah, it's going to be cozy there between the tables and the, and the fence, for sure.
If we, if, if it becomes a situation where we, you need it either inside or outside, and there's still room for it, then we could use it, but it's just going to hang out in our office.
Interesting. Does the outside furniture match the inside furniture?
It does, yeah.
Oh, okay. So it's usable in other places?
Yes.
All right. Any more questions for the applicant? All right, then, this being a public hearing, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
We'll open the public hearing and see if there's anyone, any member of the public who wishes to speak on this agenda item. Sherry, anybody electronically waiting? Okay? Anyone in? Okay, anyone in the audience wish to speak? All right, then we'll close the public hearing and come back to the commission for deliberation. Thoughts? Vice Chair Nolan?
Well, they've come back and I would say they've met the requirements. It, it is a little tight, but it does meet their requirements. They do not exceed the five-foot city requirement, nor do they encroach into the six-foot Caltrans requirement. And they're putting up a barrier that ABC requires. So I'm not seeing any real issues at the moment.
All right, Commissioner Lottis?
Yeah, I, I, I'm still concerned about this. I mean, I guess, you know, there, there, I was, you know, in comparison to Ozu and, I mean, Ozu has their tables right up against the, the building and, but then they're not, they weren't required to put in a barrier.
Right.
Rowtees, I mean, I, there was some mention of pinch points that are slightly less than six. I don't know where those pinch points are because that, to me, that walkway in front of Rowtee is pretty, pretty open. And I'm still concerned about the intrusion of this. And, you know, I, as Commissioner Nolan said, I, 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 if they made the large tables smaller, it would really give, they could pull the, the split rail fence back a little bit more. And, you know, and I, and I'm not real thrilled about expanding the sale of beer and wine to the sidewalk. I think it's precedent-setting. And I did have, I do have one question for staff. What is the status of the sidewalk dining authorization per, you know, during the COVID period? Is that still in effect? Are people still allowed to do that?
Yes, that's good until the first part of next year. That'll be revisited by council shortly.
It's, it's currently allowed under the city's emergency declaration. This council has, will, will be revisiting it, as Lucas said, and I think, I believe in January or February, so.
Okay. I, I, I mean, it is a little of a bit of an aside, but, and it is temporary. Hopefully, we will get through this period at some point and go back to the way things were. But I just was wondering if that would somehow play into this approval, but I, I think the applicant is looking for something more permanent. You know, I'm having a hard time with finding equity with, say, for example, Ozu and what they, and what is being presented here. And I would just, I'd be a lot happier if there was a little bit more room. If the split rail fence was pushed back just a little further with the adjustment in size of those large tables that are out in front. Because again, I just, this is, this is right next to a pedestrian crossway. It's, it's, it's a very busy corner, really, and it's taking pedestrians from two different directions, whereas once you get down the street, people are just generally going in one direction, well, opposing directions, but they're not, not crossing the street and so forth. So I, I still have those concerns, and that's what I'm struggling with right now.
Okay. Commissioner Trent, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I just, I appreciate the applicant going to the, the lengths to get these drawings to some dimensions that actually make some sense. And it clearly shows that they're within the guidelines for the city and also for Caltrans. I am, you know, still a little concerned about the west side, you know, that tree well and that, the one foot kind of clear line of sight between that tree well and the, the first outcrop there on the west side. But, you know, I think it's, I think it's still within guidelines, so I appreciate the applicant doing that. I also appreciate their, their drawings that they did, their renderings with, it looks like they spray painted the, or taped off the area that is, is in question, so that actually helped provide a lot of good perspective, so I appreciate them doing that. So, you know, outside of that, I, I think I'm okay. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I wanted to compliment both staff and the applicant for each giving a little bit after the last meeting. I think staff was willing to be flexible on the, the pedestrian walkway. And I think the applicant was flexible in terms of adjusting the fence and adjusting the tables. And at this point, I think we have a winner, folks. I'd, I'd be in favor of approving this. So, any more discussion from the commissioners? If not, could we have a motion one way or the other on item two, please? Am I allowed to make a motion?
Yes.
All right, then I will, I will move for approval of Director's Exemption 21-012 and modification to minor conditional use permit 06-03 at 423 East Ojai Avenue. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
I'm gonna say no.
Commissioner Lottis?
No.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Two to two. The motion fails.
I'd be willing to make a, another motion.
All right.
All right. I guess I should read all this, too. I make a motion that we accept DE 21-012 and the modification to minor conditional use permit CUP 0603 with the following modification, that the two twenty-eight inch wide by twenty-eight inch long dining tables and the, the thirty-two inch long by fourteen inch wide movable bench be reduced to fourteen inches wide by twenty-eight inches long. And thus, the required barrier could be moved in an additional approximately fourteen inches. And that would actually further widen the pinch point and the overall access.
Do you, do you want to, do you feel it's appropriate to add something about tree grates? Or do you want to leave that to?
You know, I wasn't going to include it. I wasn't sure at this point if that would have been the city's obligation because it is in the public right-of-way and outside of the.
Well, yes, but the applicant's causing is impacting the area.
Yeah.
There is a nexus there.
Yeah, I, I just, when I looked at those cutouts, I, they just were so small and then with the, the width of the, the diameter of the tree trunks, it almost didn't make sense to put them in there. But I think that would be something that would have to be assessed, so I wasn't going to include that in my motion.
Okay. Well, the pulling back of the barrier would certainly help to, it would, it actually function as some additional protection for the trees because there would be more room.
Actually on both sides, I mean, east and west.
And I did want to add, just, I forgot to mention this. I mean, this, this whole sidewalk is maintained by the city, and I'm sure it was constructed by the city. So this is like a sidewalk easement on top of private property. So we're not talking about normal private property rights to use this. This is really a public resource maintained by the city. So I think we really, it really requires, warrants, you know, extra scrutiny and due consideration for, of that, for those reasons.
Before we characterize this as private property maintained by the city, I'd like to ask staff, for distances farther than five or six feet from the curb face, who maintains that concrete surface?
It's supposed to be the applicant, but I believe Public Works several years back did improvements within that area as a part of just the overall sweeping improvements. I don't, I don't have confirmation on that, but I, I believe that's what happened. But you're correct. The right-of-way ends five feet from the curb.
And by Caltrans, it ends six feet from the curb.
Additional path, yes. Pedestrian pathway, which they would, which because it's Caltrans-owned, they want that, that's not a city requirement. Our, our typical requirements are five feet, or, or it can be as narrow as, in some cases, a pinch point can be three feet in talking with Public Works. But in the case of Caltrans, they're wanting as wide of a pathway as possible. Six feet is what they're looking for. That's what the applicant has provided. Staff is supportive of that. They've gone from the four, five feet, four inches, was what we've seen before, to the six feet. And that's why staff is supportive of at this point. The, the other thing is, Commissioner Nolan, you're talking about the dining tables being reduced from twenty-eight inches by twenty-eight inches to fourteen inches by fourteen inches?
No, fourteen by twenty-eight to duplicate the two smaller ta, tables that are, they have shown on the plan. So basically, the tables would all be the same size. And that would allow the, the barrier to get moved in potentially about fourteen inches.
Is, is there a reason to move the barrier in? It's already compliant.
It is, you know, I think my concern is, is that, especially on the west side, where the tree well is right before the tree well, there's actually kind of a grade break and a rise in the grade there with the concrete. It's just, I don't know, I was just, I mean, yes, there's clear space for ADA access. I'm, I was just looking for ease of reducing obstacles. Meaning the tree wells are obstacles, and there's also this, a grade break there with a slight rise in the concrete or in that one area. I don't know if you saw that. So if you look on their, the enlarged siding plan, they have letter C on the west side. If you look straight across from there, they don't have it marked on the plan, but if you actually went out to the site, you would see that there is a grade change right there. So I was trying to minimize the obstacles for whether you're, you know, in a wheelchair or whoever you are, whatever age, trying to get through and navigate the space, because you're not going to have like a direct, well, there is kind of a direct line. It's just a bit of a weave to it.
Move that barrier in by fourteen inches and shrink the table by fourteen inches, then you still have only a three-foot area for a wheelchair to go past between the barrier and the table.
That's correct, and that's like.
That at all.
That's all they need, and if you look actually on the plan, they have three feet designated.
Right.
And, and that's a typical minimum for ADA, ADA pathway.
And so the goal here is to take away another fourteen inches of private property?
Well.
I, I dare say there's a sidewalk easement out there, and it's maintained by the city. We're not talking about strict private property. We're talking about a public easement.
I'm sorry.
Public maintenance.
Commissioner Lottis, I, I do not believe that there's a, a public easement there. That's a, the, this is, yes, at one point, this was maintained by Public Works, but there's no, there's no existing easement.
Okay, okay, but it is maintained by Public Works. Aside, the, the downtown sidewalks are maintained by Public Works. We don't have the property owners go out and repair their sidewalks or, or, that would be silly. That would be, it's this, it's the public entity that takes care of the sidewalks in a uniform manner, right?
That's correct, but if, if Public Works.
I would hope so.
That's correct, but if Public Works were to go out there, there's, there's no existing easement for Public Works to go out there, obviously. If there are sidewalk improvements, Public Works has gone out there in the past. I don't believe that there's a pattern in practice for Public Works to maintain these sidewalks i, as a part of accepted practice, but they're, they have in the past. I just, I think that's.
Okay, it's, it's more informal in Ojai. I should have known. It's more informal. It's a gentleman's agreement. The city maintains. It's a public resource. So that's, anyway, I will second Commissioner Nolan's motion.
Sorry, can I make a comment here? You realize that bringing this in for.
We're, we're deliberating right now. If, if you wish to speak, then we need to reopen a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, you can reopen.
You, you can't reopen the public hearing. I just, there's a motion and there's a second, there's, now, now goes the discussion, but dur, during the period of discussion, you can reopen the public hearing and then close the public hearing before you move on to your own discussion. So I would suggest if you so would like to move, open a public hearing, do so now and then.
Let's, let's reopen the public hearing before we have discussion of the second motion. Please come up, sir.
Thank you. So, well, you're proposing of bringing in fourteen inches. So that whole area is before the incline of the fence, which meets the pinch point. So to me, the primary obstacle, this whole pathway, has been increasing the amount of space at the pinch point. Bringing the fence in fourteen inches won't change anything because there's a thirty-six inch walkway from the column of the building out to that fenceway. So you're not actually going to gain any space there. You're just going to reduce space.
The table smaller.
You're going to make the table smaller, and you're going to make the walkway smaller in an area that's already six feet from the curb. And, you know, I don't know why there's trouble finding equity with Ozu, but Ojai Roadie has less than a six-foot space from the tables outside of the ABC barrier. Hakane has a thirty-six inch pathway between a tree well and the building. You know, this is actually beyond a lot of what has been allowed since the Jersey Mike's resolution in 2006. So I'm just, it's confusing to me why meeting the requirements of the city and of the county is not enough for the council.
Thank you. All right, let's close the public hearing again. I, I have to say I am, I am also, maybe not equally, maybe not similarly, but I am, I am concerned that the commission is setting standards that are above the city, that are above Caltrans, that are above what staff recommends for the sole purpose of widening an already compliant pathway for pedestrian access outside the fence. I'm disturbed that the drawing that we have in front of us was not acceptable to a majority of the commission. And I don't know where we go from here. If we keep, we could, I mean, the next step is to take all the exterior seating away entirely to give us a nice big place to drive a truck through on the sidewalk. But I don't see that as a reasonable expectation anymore than moving the fence in another fourteen inches just to have fourteen inches. And that's all I have to say. Vice Chair Nolan, please go ahead.
Yes. Well, number one, I, I don't want to take anyone's rights away. And number two, I actually want this project to work. But I did feel, when I did go out there, and I completely understand what you're saying, I don't, once again, want to take anyone's property away or their rights. I, I just, I did feel like there was a little bit of a compromise. And I do realize that throughout the entire downtown of Ojai, the conditions vary. There's no consistency anywhere. So it's hard to compare even to Ozu or to Roadie, which I'm not even trying to do.
Yeah.
But this is a question that I would have for staff. Is, may I rescind my motion, although I know there's a second on it?
May you what?
Rescind my emotion, or like draw, withdraw my motion? Even though I know there's a second on it? Is that?
Yes, you, you can withdraw your motion because it hasn't gone to a vote yet.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw it.
Okay. Are there any other motions to be made on this issue? Well, then I will make one, and I'll try it again. I will move that we accept Director's Exemption 21-012 and the minor modification to minor conditional use permit 06-03. and the minor modification to Minor Conditional Use Permit 0603 as presented and recommended by staff in this item.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, this is a discretionary decision by the Planning Commission, and we are supposed to use our judgment on this. It's not about meeting minimums from the county or ABC. It is about our judgment of the specific conditions for this site. And that's where I'm coming from. So I feel that this, this area, what they're proposing intrudes more than, than the pedestrian passageway is going to be impinged upon to a greater degree than necessary. And they're also asking for more than what has been there. And so it's with a lot of thought and consideration that I, I just do not feel this is satisfactory. I do appreciate the applicant working hard to, you know, provide the detailed information that we were asking for. He has done that, and it has really clarified, you know, what we're looking at, and I definitely appreciate that. But I just, visually, I think four similar-sized tables would be much, much more pleasing. And I think that having the split rail fence moved back a little bit more would is really important for the safety and the ease of pedestrian passage. And that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Nolan, final thoughts?
No, I'm okay.
All right. Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to what you said prior, Chair Quilisi, about commenting on how well the applicant did in this particular situation, as well as staff, and coming to kind of a compromise and an agreement. I think with any type of situation like this, you know, having a win-win for both, you know, the city and for the applicant is important. I feel like bringing the, bringing the barrier back another fourteen inches and reducing the table size could impact the business. I feel like it could just create a space that's pretty darn narrow in an already narrow space. So, you know, patrons to this, to the area might not appreciate that as much, so that could impact business. And I don't want to do that to a small business in Ojai. I don't feel that that's, you know, something that's a benefit to anybody. So I feel like they've met the guidelines. I felt like, you know, they've gone above and beyond what the city has asked, or with the five feet. They want the additional one foot, the six-foot clearance. I do agree that the tree grades probably aren't the best solution, but maybe there's alternative solutions that we can take a look at. That area does have a little bit of a grade. I think that's probably because the roots of the tree is coming up a little bit, but maybe that's something we can look at and get that a little bit, you know, better aligned. Anyway, I feel like this is one of a situation where both parties have done the best they could to make a situation work. So I hope that we can move forward on this.
Okay, thank you. And I would agree. I appreciate the willingness to compromise on both sides. I think, I think this is a good proposal that we have, and so I'm calling the question. Sherry?
Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes, and I just, with one comment, I just wanted to say, ideally, I would have liked to see that extra fourteen inches. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it wouldn't have impeded that dining space at all if the tables were cut in half. But at the same time, I do agree that the applicant did meet the minimum requirements, and so I'm voting yes.
Very good.
Commissioner Lottis?
No.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Okay. By three to one, the issue is resolved. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your willingness to work with the city on this. Talk to Lucas later and see what next paperwork is. Thank you.
Now that you voted, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I have one of those dining tables that expands. And in, you know, another way to possibly handle this would have been to have the larger tables be fold-out tables, so that when it's not busy and there's not a lot of people, they could be small, and when it is busy, they could fold out. But the trade-off is that the outdoor dining does make the town more pedestrian-friendly, and hopefully, you know, it'll work out with people, with the space that there is. I think you guys are great, the way you deliver it. I'm just utterly transfixed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to item three.
Chair Quilisi, before we move on, I just want to remind the commission, with respect to off-site visits and ex parte's, it's inadvisable for commission members to make their own measurements and investigation, because staff has prepared a staff report, and that staff report is part of the administrative record in this decision. And so things that are not, if the commission considers things outside of the staff report, that's extra record evidence, or extra record, and if this were to be, you know, a question of dispute, that you would then have to produce what you've created.
Revealed or not, it's outside the administrative record.
Exactly. So I would advise that if staff does have questions about, you know, for example, you know, numbers, yeah, numbers and having to, huh? And development standards and having to, rather than going out there and measuring, I would recommend that you ask staff to do it, so that it makes it part of the, makes it into the packet itself, or it makes it into staff's presentation. And it makes, so if in the event that these matters are ever litigated, or a subject of an appeal, that those, everything that was considered by the commission is contained within the report itself, and there are no other other numbers or other findings out there, or other evidence, or other...
Yeah, I'd like to also add that if there are questions or concerns that are being raised, I mean, one of the reasons why, like, for instance, Attachment C with this particular item had tape on the ground, and we had individuals walking around just to give some perspective.
Yeah.
It's difficult to see lines on a piece of paper, but it puts a lot more weight when you've actually got a photo with some sort, and in this case, we ended up realizing that that tape on the ground helped to identify kind of where that fence was going to be potentially placed, and where that six-foot kind of delineating line was at. So, I mean...
And it's all available to the public before...
Yeah, realistically, the October 6th meeting was tough, because there was a lot of questions that came out of that meeting. We took that, we took that to heart, went back and talked to the applicant, and really kind of got to, you know, pencil the paper to address those issues and those challenges. So, yeah, no, absolutely. If there are questions even before the meeting, I would say reach out to staff, to myself or to Maura, depending on who's working on the project, and we can certainly address that.
Yeah, and then the last thing is that I would caution commission members from being independent fact-finders, because if, for example, a matter were to get litigated or be part of, disputed, there may be a situation where the commission member would have to, would have to be deposed or testify, or have to testify or provide evidence apart from their, you know, them as an entire commission. And so I would like, you know, I think that's something that we all want to avoid. So if there are questions about numbers, I would, you know, you can ask staff to go out there and they'll happily measure for you.
The last thing is, I would say, applaud the fact that this commission, look, I've worked in a couple different cities. I think we all know that from my, from what I talked about when we all first met. This is, this is a commission that loves to get in the weeds, and I love that. But we've also got to be careful with how that ends up, and I don't want there to be crossing a line to get this commission into some hot water. So that's, that's really kind of the, I think, what Nikhil is getting at here, so.
Okay. And I apologize again. I skipped right over the item about site visits and ex parte contacts. It is in here, isn't it? Yep. We're on to item three, a lot line adjustment on Country Club Drive. And I would, I would ask, first, well, I'll answer first. I've been to the site. I had no ex parte contacts. Vice Chair Nolan?
I've been to the site and had no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lottis?
I reviewed the site on Google Maps. That was the best I could do, and I had no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. And Commissioner Trent?
The same. I did look it up on Google Maps, but no ex parte contacts.
Okay. Then, here we have a lot line adjustment and a variance. Lucas or Maura, please take us through that.
Maura's got her presentation on this matter.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So yes, the request is for a lot line adjustment and a variance to allow an adjustment of an existing property line that divides two legal non-conforming lots, and that will make one lot more conforming and the other less conforming. We didn't note the numbers. The lot line adjustment is Lot Line Adjustment 21-001, and the variance is variance 21-001 also. So pursuant to the City of Ojai Municipal Code, a lot line adjustment must not further an existing non-conforming situation, or not increase or make more onerous any violation of the city's existing zoning regulations. Therefore, in order to approve a lot line adjustment, a variance is required to be approved by the Planning Commission as well in this case. In 2004, there was a merger of three lots that was approved to create these two lots that you're looking at today. The merger made two lots less conforming than each of the three had been initially. But as you have, as I've said, they're still non-conforming as to lot area. They are, however, consistent in lot area with the surrounding lots on the block. The property is zoned, single-family residential, low density. The maximum density for the zone is one unit per acre. The general plan land use designation is low-density residential, which is to provide for a transition from lower-density quasi-rural to more urban uses. And the maximum density in the general plan for this site is one to two dwelling units per acre. Each of these lots is developed with a single-family residence, and one of them also includes a deed-restricted guest house. For a variance request, the applicant is required to provide the findings for consideration of approval along with their submittal. And the findings are to relate to special circumstances applicable to the property, including location, shape, size, surrounding, or topography, in such a way that the strict application of the zoning regulations denies the property of the privileges that are enjoyed by properties in the vicinity or under the same zoning designation. The applicant's project description, which was submitted with the application, indicates a need to adjust the current lot line to designate portions of the property that will be on parcel A, and to sell off parcel B in an effort to pay for maintenance and expenses related to the remaining parcel A that would be kept in the family. The findings or justifications made by the applicant are included in your packet, and they generally conclude that the substandard size of the lots and placement of the lot line over the driveway prohibits the applicant from selling one of the lots while still enjoying the privileges of the other property. The lots are currently approximately three-quarters of an acre. One is .78 acres, and the other is .72 acres. The proposed lot line adjustment would create one being .90 acres and the other one .59 acres. While the parcels are currently substandard, they're relatively consistent, as I said previously, with the surrounding lots. The adjustment would make them an exception as opposed to being conforming, or consistent, rather. Regarding the required findings and staff's conclusions with them, relating to special circumstances for the properties, like the surrounding properties, these two parcels or lots are relatively flat. Topographically, they do not appear to be any, there's nothing unusual about them. They're rectangular like the surrounding lots, although they do have a crooked lot line between them. The lots are substandard in size, however, as I've already said, so are all the others on the block, because they're all approximately three-quarters of an acre, except for two of them, which are still substandard, but they're a little bit larger. Regarding preservation of enjoyment of a property right possessed by other properties in the same vicinity, other than sharing a crooked lot line, the subject parcels don't appear to be lacking in the ability to preserve and enjoy property rights under those of their surrounding neighbors. There's no apparent necessity to share a driveway, have a lot line cross the existing driveway, or share a gravel pad. There's a curb cut existing for the southern property. The northern property driveway could be realigned, and a gravel pad could be replaced on the northern property, and also doesn't appear to be essential to well-being that's shared by all. Additionally, the surrounding lots are of similar size and configuration, and they are developed with single-family residences. Related to special privilege inconsistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zoning district, staff finds that granting the requested variance would indeed be a, granting a special privilege, because it would be supporting an increase in a non-conformity which is expressly addressed in the municipal code. It's, just happens to be, not that everyone is looking at the municipal code, but it's Section 10-3.11, which is lot line adjustments. And it states in that section that a lot line will not increase or make more onerous any violation of the city's existing zoning regulations. Additionally, the lots as they are presently, they do not deprive the land and homeowners of any rights enjoyed by surrounding land and homeowners, who have approximately the same substandard lot area. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission deny the request for approval of the lot line adjustment and variance based on the Municipal Code section, this is a different section, which is 10-2.2606, and that is, that relates to findings and decision. And the specific findings in the section that I'm relating to for the denial would be based on Section 2 Finding A and Section 3 B.1. Those are two specific findings. And with that, that's my presentation, and if you have any questions.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Could I just make an additional point on top of that while you're gathering your thoughts here? So I don't know, I mean, since I started here, I don't know that we've actually had a variance come forward before this commission, but I wanted to just provide some information regarding variances. So when, when you're looking at a variance and when staff is processing a variance, you look at all of the findings that are identified within the ordinance itself. And when you're looking at each of these findings, each one of these findings have to be made in the positive. If any of the findings can be made in the positive, then the variance itself fails. It's not a four out of the five, eighty percent's good, right? No. Five out of five have to be made in the positive. So that's, that's really what we're identifying here, is two of those cannot be made in the positive. So that's why we're recommending denial.
Okay. Questions for staff? Vice Chair Nolan?
Oops, I had, I was on mute. Sorry. I have no questions at the moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Lottis?
No, I have no questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Trent?
No, not at this time. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, well, I have a few. As you mentioned, every parcel on that block is non-conforming. Can I deduce from that that any lot line adjustment would result in one lot becoming smaller and therefore make more onerous any violation of the city's existing zoning regulations?
On this block?
On this block, the nineteen lots that are on this block?
Yes, so that is, that is true. Any lot line adjustment in one way or the other is going to affect two properties. One will be... One will be larger and the other will be smaller.
So nobody on that block can do anything in terms of a lot line adjustment without a variance?
That's correct. They would not be able to do a lot line adjustment without a variance.
All right. And it seems the disagreement is over enjoying the privilege of the property. Are there any other lots on that block among these 19 parcels where a driveway is partly on one parcel and partly on another parcel? Is there any other instance of that?
That, that research hasn't been done to, to see if driveways are crossing lot lines.
So...
So in looking at it, I, out of the 19, it was 19?
Yes.
I don't believe that any of them have this, this lot line or the line itself that crosses the driveway from the interior standpoint.
Okay. So the alternatives there are move the driveway or do some paperwork to make it unnecessary to move the driveway?
An easement.
And with, I'm sorry?
Like an easement.
Can you say paperwork? That would be one of the...
Well, a lot line adjustment and variance are paperwork and easement could be paperwork. The same is true of the gravel, the existing gravel area that is currently shared between the two parcels. The alternatives are a paperwork exercise, namely this, or moving the gravel area.
Or creating a new gravel area.
Or continuing to share it between two parcels.
Or, or creating a new one, yes.
Okay. So we're talking about, should we, should we get construction equipment out or should we do some paperwork? I think. Not, not trying to prejudice the choice, but I think those are the choices. And we don't know if there's any other parcel that, any other pair of parcels that share, at least partially, share a driveway. It says here, there are no special, this is on attachment A, this is now the resolution. It says in the first, first whereas on page two, "There are no special circumstances applicable to the property that cannot otherwise, cannot be otherwise adjusted without the benefit of a variance and lot line adjustment." Again, we're talking about moving existing driveway, moving existing gravel pad. Are those the otherwise adjusted? Is that what's being spoken of here in the whereas?
Yes.
Okay.
Although I'd like to add that there's the physical adjustment, but then there's also an easement opportunity, potential, potential easement opportunity between the property owners, besides also the requested variance. In other words, a variance is not the only option.
Okay, okay. Let's explore the easement option. If, at the moment, both parcels are, are owned by the same party.
That's correct.
If the party acting as the owner of parcel B grants an easement to the owner of parcel A, what is the status of that easement if parcel B is sold to a third party?
Perhaps that's a question for the attorney.
So, what happens if, if an easement is granted from parcel B owner to parcel A owner, both the same person at the moment?
Correct.
What is the status of that easement if parcel B is sold?
So, the easement is not granted to the owner, it's granted to the land. The easement runs with the land. So even if it's sold, the easement is a recorded easement, so it runs with the land.
Okay.
It's not, it's, you don't, you're not giving, you're not giving a particular person an easement, you're giving a, the easement is a right conferred on whoever owns that property. So when it's, it's recorded...
And stays with the property?
Correct. It runs with the land, as we say.
Okay. If, if there, and I notice that instead of a slanted, the existing slanted property line, let's call it, between the two, it now is a more rectilinear...
Yes.
...division between the two properties. If, if an easement were granted covering those two pieces of land that the applicant is asking be taken from parcel B and added to parcel A, then that easement becomes permanent? What happens to the owner if, if parcel B is sold? Does the, the new owner of parcel B have any rights to that property?
Yes, because it was, it's part of, it's part of the easement. So the easement confers upon them that right.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's parcel A?
Yes.
Has some rights with regard to that property?
Right.
But what rights does the owner, the new owner of parcel B have with regard to that easement area?
Well, the new owner has to respect the easement.
Okay. I presume, I did not notice frankly when I drove by, I don't know if, I don't, there's clearly not a fence that crosses the existing driveway, but I didn't notice there, if there was any other fence between the two parcels.
No, I don't believe there is a fence between the two.
Okay.
And so, just, I think, to clarify that point, what, if parcel A would, were to record an easement allowing access, to share the driveway and the gravel site? That easement would, that easement was an agreed-to easement between parcel A and parcel B. That's, easement is recorded in parcel A's favor. It goes on title. It's recorded in the, it's recorded at the county level. That is a, it's an encumbrance on property B or parcel B. And that, it can be discharged through mutual consent of the parties. Or, I mean, there, I mean, now I'm going back into law school, but there, for example, an easement can be abandoned, an easement can be adversely possessed. There, there are a variety of reasons, but the most of the time in easement, a pre-existing easement, unless it is either condemned out by, if it's a easement on, that, where the city can condemn out an easement based on eminent domain, or if the easement is discharged by mutual consent. And usually dissolving the easement. And that, that's one way of doing it. So, but to go back to your point, if once an easement is recorded, it will always be on the property, runs with the property. The property could change hands many times...
And the owner of parcel A then has whatever rights are contained in the easement in terms of access to these two pieces of land?
Correct. And all future owners of parcel B have to acknowledge and respect that right.
And could, and could an owner of parcel B then put a fence where the existing property line is?
No, because that would be violating the easement, the rights, the parcel A's easement rights.
Okay.
And so parcel B...
I just want to understand.
Yeah. Parcel B, parcel A could, could, could sue the block placement of the fence.
Okay.
Yes, because it is a violation of their...
But it would take litigation to do that.
Yeah, I mean, but the parcel A would likely, I mean, again, this is all conjecture at this point, but likely, I mean, if there was an easement between the two properties, parcel A would likely prevail because they, there's a, they have an easement right.
Because the easement is there, okay?
But I, again, I can't speak to any, this is all hypothetical.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see. Thank you, by the way, for the, for the colorful drawing that you sent us earlier today. I think I understood already, even though the other lines were black and white, what was supposed to be there. All right, so we have no conforming lot areas at the moment and we would have a need for a variance or an easement to allow the owner of parcel A to be able to have no encumbrance on the use of the property that's requested in the lot line adjustment?
Yes, but the variance is...
The variance would still be, well, no.
Well, the variance is, is specific to the fact that the lot is being made worse, more, more of, more non-conforming. It's not a variance so someone can use a driveway. It's, it's, it's because the lot is being more non-conforming.
Right, it's because one lot's becoming smaller.
Right.
And that would be the case if there were any lot line adjustment, any, any other lot line adjustment anywhere on that block.
Right, it would be making a non-conforming lot more non-conforming.
Okay. And an easement would mean there would be no requirement for a lot line adjustment or a variance?
That's correct.
I think I understand now. Any other Commissioners have any questions for staff? All right?
Well, hang on, I just had a quick...
The applicant here.
Oh, John Trent.
Sorry, yes. The, the easement that you're, you're talking about, where is that? I apologize, I have an old, a map that's...
There isn't, there is no easement at the moment.
There is no easement at the moment. I was, because staff brought up the possibility of an easement as an alternative to a lot line adjustment and variance, I tried to probe what the implications would be of such an easement, which does not currently exist.
Got it, okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
And I apologize if that wasn't clear. It was, it was unclear to me at the beginning, but it's a little clearer now for me.
Thank you.
Okay, well then, Sheri, let's hear from the applicant. I'm sorry, the name?
Spencer.
Spencer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Is it possible for me to be on the video as well so I can show our presentation, please?
If you're on Zoom, you have the ability to use or not use your video, I think.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm avail, I'm able to use my video, just, I'm still not shown as a panelist. I think I have to be promoted to be a panelist to be able to use my video, please.
Okay. We have IT working on it at this end.
Right there, guy.
Hold one, please.
We've promoted you to panelist.
Ah, there you are. Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you have to say, sir.
Absolutely. Sorry, just so I'm clear, can, can you also promote Ms. Carroll? I believe she's probably in the waiting room. That's the applicant and I'm working with her. And Mr. Cover Rubius as well, who's our civil engineer.
And David? Okay?
Very good. And I know Zoom is always fun in everyone's life right now, but Judy, are you able to go off of mute or go on your video and do you want to begin speaking?
Is that right? The other two are muted?
Yeah. They can be unmuted.
They can unmute? Can they do the same thing and...
Am I unmuted now?
You are, yes ma'am.
Okay, but I'm not on in person.
You're...
You probably would have to turn on the, her video.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do it.
In the same lower left corner of your screen where it says mute and unmute, there should be a use video and stop video.
I don't know why there isn't on mine, there's a...
You have to hover your cursor...
A little movie camera there with the lines.
I'm on the iPad. Well, can I just do it by voice?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Good evening. It's really been interesting, listen, listening to how carefully and how deeply you go into all of these items. I'm, I'm, I'm very appreciative. I'm Judy Carroll and I own the property at 803 and 813 Country Club Drive. I've owned it for 14 years and in that time, my family and I have thoroughly enjoyed the wonderful community and the special Ojai experience. My reasons for being here before you tonight, you know about parcel A and parcel B. And the reason for the lot line adjustment is to eliminate the encroachment of parcel B on the driveway that is exclusively used by parcel A. Parcel B has its own exclusive driveway off Country Club Drive. When I purchased the property, I was informed mistakenly that there were three parcels. The seller did not realize that they had been converted to two. When I built the cottage on parcel B, I was completely unaware that parcel B encroached on the parcel A driveway. When I started the lot line adjustment, my motivation was passing the properties on to my descendants without the confusion of parcel B encroaching on the driveway of parcel A. I built the cottage primarily for the use of my daughter Jennifer and her family who live in San Francisco so that they could spend extensive time in Ojai with me. Tragically, the situation has changed with her recent sudden passing, the result of a brain aneurysm. I now have a significant financial responsibility helping to support Jennifer's two children. I need to be able to sell, if necessary, one or both of the properties without the encroachment problem in order to financially provide for my granddaughters. I'm, I'm sorry to tell this sad story, but this is, this is where it is. This is what I'm living with and how I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to do to, to make it a little bit easier. But it is clear that the driveway issue would prevent a sale of one of those parcels. I thank you so much for your patience and your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Thanks Judy. So I want to, again, my name is Spencer Calick, I'm, I'm working with, with Ms. Carroll as well. I just wanted to put a couple of finer points on some of the things that she mentioned and a couple others. You know, this is, the intention behind this whole application is to frankly clean things up that frankly weren't done properly in the past and to allow for future generations to enjoy this property or at least part of these properties. And I think that the Chair put it best about whether we, we want to, you know, take out the construction equipment or we want to do some paperwork. I'll be candid, this is really a paperwork conversation and we're not looking to do construction to, to solve this issue. The other thing I would say is, I think that it was rightly pointed out that we are, you know, staff is very focused on the fact that this frankly minor request is going to be creating a smaller lot. Well, what they are leaving out there is, it's actually also creating a larger lot as well, something that's even more conforming with the zoning code requirements. And so, you know, we're very focused on that. Look, staff and I, I want to be very clear, I have tremendous respect for staff. We've spent a good amount of time chatting about this the last couple of days and frankly over the last year or so, and I really appreciate the work that they have done on this. You know, they, we have a bit of a difference of opinion and, and I get that and I respect that, but ultimately, we have put forth, and I can walk through the findings for why there's a hardship here, why a variance and why the lot line should be supported. You know, ultimately, this is a policy decision for you all and I think, because your lot put this best in the last item, that this is discretionary, it's up to, to us at the end of the day. And we feel as though, based upon the record, based upon the findings that we provided, that there are, that there's ample support to support a lot line adjustment and a variance here. The last thing, or a couple of last things that I want to point out is, number one, on the question about an easement versus a, in doing this lot line adjustment, you know, as the city attorney rightly pointed out, it's a bit hypothetical when you go down the world of an easement. It gets quite complicated. You're talking about having to potentially get into litigation, drafting formal legal documents. Candidly, doing this lot line adjustment is a much more artful way of doing it. We were very much aware of the easement option and we did not pursue that, candidly because we thought that this was going to move forward. We were quite surprised when all of a sudden we got a staff report that was recommending denial. So we would ask that we not be, go down this kind of speculative, hypothetical world of an easement, but that the way that this hearing ends tonight is, we have very clearly newly drawn lines. Yes, one lot's going to get a little smaller, but one lot... one lot's going to get bigger, um, and, and we're supportive of that. The last thing I will say, um, and I, I want to be mindful that this is a bit new and a bit controversial, so, I'll, I'll preface by saying that. But for those of you who may not be aware, there was a new law that was passed, uh, early this year in the legislature, um, Senate Bill Nine. Um, it's controversial, uh, you know, many people have different feelings about that, but what I can tell you is, is that what it essentially does is it allows for lot line adjustments to be ministerial, meaning no discretion whatsoever. If we submit an application, uh, the city has to approve it, assuming that we comply with all of the permit requirement, or the application requirements. Um, I don't love it, I'll be honest, uh, but it, it is going to be the law of the land, was passed, it was signed by the governor, uh, and it goes into effect beginning of the year. The import of that for this matter before you today is that if we wanted to, we have no plans for, but if we wanted to, we could create four separate lots out of these two, and build four separate homes on this lot. I'll be very clear, that's not what we're asking for, we don't have plans for that, but if, and, and no one would want that necessarily for this lot, however, that it would be ministerial, no discretion, we could do it right away. So, part of the reason why we're asking, we've gone down this road, is we're not coming here asking you for four lots and saying, you gotta do this. What we're saying is, just help us to clean up, candidly, a bit of a mess that was made before, to allow for clarity moving forward, to allow for the Carrolls, uh, Carroll family to have clarity moving forward, to, um, be able to, you know, protect their private property rights. And, uh, we feel confident based upon what's in the record, that you all can make the findings to support, uh, approval of this project. And again, I very much appreciate staff's time and work on this, very much appreciate your consideration this evening, uh, and myself, uh, Ms. Carroll, and our, our civil architect, our civil engineer, David Cover Rubius, are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, there was a third applicant, uh, David is it?
Uh, David, David's here to answer any questions. I don't, David, do you have something you want to add?
Okay.
Uh, yes, uh, again, my name is David Cover Rubius, I'm actually the, uh, licensed land surveyor, not civil engineer.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, just correction for that, for the notes and minutes. Um, but, you know, in discussion of a, uh, an easement, and now an easement puts a somewhat burden, and, uh, it, it, it constant, it leaves open area for, for lawsuits and such whenever they cross a common driveway between two parties. I'm sure you guys read about them in the newspaper and, and so on and so forth, and possibly had some issues here within the city. Uh, so, we're trying to stay away from creating any easements that will constitute a common area, because separating the two will make it like a lot cleaner, and then in, in title, it would add something to the title, uh, like a cloud of some sort, and then it comes into, okay, well, what's the value of the lot, and how does it, uh, how does the easement, uh, go into the pricing of the lot itself, now that you have an area that you can't use? So, there's a couple of things that go into that, uh, which we try to stay away from as well. Uh, secondly, um, we talked about easements and the, uh, the owner of the property writing an easement. Currently, uh, I believe it's, I, I can't, uh, state the statute in these, um, um, subdivision map act, where an owner cannot write a, an easement to themselves, it has to be to another party in benefit. I mean, they, they could reserve one, but they can't legally write one to themselves direct. So, uh, if you guys have any other questions, I am available. Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the time and effort.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, David. So, we're, we're available to answer questions, Chair, and, and happy to do so. Again, I recognize it's always challenging when you've got a, you know, a staff report and a resolution in, in front of you that, you know, is a, the ability for you to say no, but our, our request would be that we have a discussion, happily answer questions, and that, you know, hopefully you all will direct staff to come back with a resolution, uh, for approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Nikhil, is that correct, you cannot grant yourself an easement?
So, this is between two parcels, though.
True.
Which are in the- I'll have to think about that more, uh, in the context of this particular situation. I would just point out that, um, on the SB nine point, though, um, uh, on the SB nine point, SB nine is, is, uh, comes into effect next year, and so, um, and that does create, but it requires, um-
Yeah, SB nine is 10 weeks away.
I, and I want to stay away from any sort of discussion on SB nine, that is not a part of the findings that we're talking about here in terms of justification for that. So, I appreciate the context of what we're talking about here, but in terms of what we're focused on here, it is the findings specifically.
Okay.
Not about what's potentially looming in 2022.
And Nikhil will, will ponder that for a while. Any, any commissioners have questions for the applicants? Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, uh, just to be clear, so when the property was purchased, it had already been, um, it originally was three parcels, a previous owner, um, had those three parcels merged to two parcels, and so when, um, Ms. Carroll bought the property, it was, she bought it as two parcels, correct?
That's correct.
Can I still be heard?
Yeah.
Yes, we're questioning the applicants right now, you're will, you're free to speak.
Can I, can I still be heard, are you hearing me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, it was three parcels that became two, but the seller and her husband were estranged. She told me that there were three parcels, and I received three tax bills. She did not realize that the lot line had been changed and that it was only two. And I found out when I built this house, which I thought was going to be on a third parcel. So, that was, yes, I did not do my homework, but getting three tax bills and being told that it was three lots, I thought that it was.
Okay, so, um, then let me ask you this, um, so were both the lots undeveloped when you bought them, the two parcels?
No, no, there was a beautiful home on parcel A.
Okay.
I, I built parcel B about, um, I don't know, seven or eight years later.
Okay, good. Um, was the brick driveway the one that both parcels are now presently using? Was that in place when you bought the parcel?
Yes, yes. So I never understood how the lot line was divided that way. It didn't have to move it that far over to avoid the driveway.
So, uh, and did the previous, so the previous owner put the driveway in, and probably because she owned, I'm just, you know, speculating, she owned both lots, or both parcels?
Three, in this case.
She didn't put into the mix that, hey, I, I, down the road I may sell, so I should keep them separated. So she actually went over the actual property line, is that correct?
It was done before that, I think when the house was originally built, they put the driveway in, and there have been multiple owners since then.
Okay, and it may have been when there were three parcels, we don't know.
Well, I think it was, that's probably when it was done.
Okay, so basically you inherited this driveway that goes over the property line?
Yes, but I had no idea.
Okay, um, all right, so my other question is, uh, there is a curb cut on parcel B, and if I'm reading it, and I, I did do a drive-by, and then it looks like there's a gate. Is there an actual driveway that goes to the house that you built, and if so, is it being used?
There is a driveway, um, we don't use it because the other driveway connects to it. Um, if anybody were going to stay there for any length of time, we would probably be using it. It is there, it is a driveway, it does have a gate. The gate, the gate is not automatic, so it's just easier to use the other one.
Okay, um, all right, those are my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Nikhil.
Uh, Trick, well, see, just on that point about the easements, I, I just wanted to clarify, um, because I, I think I was a little confused. Um, the property owner, uh, Ms. Carroll owns both of those properties, it's not her, she does not-
All three parcels, both park properties.
Well, there's two parcels. There were three.
There were three.
There are two.
Well, there are three parcels named in, in the, uh, beginning of the administrative report.
Correct, if I can clarify, Chair, there are, there are three APNs, and frankly, I think that there was some disconnect between what actually got done with the property at the city level, and then what got recorded at the county level, um, but there are two parcels, it's a, a bit confusing, and it's correct that both parcels are owned by Ms. Carroll, uh, or, Ms. Carroll, uh, owned both parcels.
Okay, I, I still find this confusing, because I pulled the assessor's parcel map this afternoon off the web, and it still shows three parcel numbers.
Some, sometimes the assessor's parcel map hasn't caught up with, and it, it could be in the way it was recorded, um, that probably needs to be cleaned up, um-
You understand why I was confused?
Yeah. Um, on, on the point of, if she owns both of those parcels, um, parcel A, um, I mean, and the, with your question about the easement, that's correct, she can't simply grant an easement to herself, because it's, it, the, the law says that, for example, if you were, so the, the person who has the easement is basically, it's what's called the dominant, uh, and then the person who, who's, who's landed the easement on is, is called the servient. And so if you end up owning both under the doctrine of merger, um, the easement is extinguished. However, you can't simply grant to yourself an easement, because it's a nonsensical, I mean, it's pretty nonsensical to have an easement, um, on your own property, but, um, the only, again, this is hypothetical, and it's a question for the, it's, it's a question for the property owner, but she could, uh, and again, I, it's a question for the property owner, she could, um, own the property under two different entities, and then potentially grant an easement, but again, I can't speculate, and that's a question for the property owner. The easement, as it's, as it stands, an easement would be under, I think civil, I think it's Code 805 of the California Civil Code, um, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Calick will, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe she can't if she owns both those properties outright herself.
In her own name.
That's, that's correct, uh, and the city attorney's correct, uh, and this is part of the whole reason we're here, right? If we could have done this by an easement, very simply, we would have done that, we wouldn't have been wasting your time this evening, we wouldn't be trying to do the gymnastics of, of the past year or so, working with the city to get to this evening to try and move this forward. So, truthfully, all we're looking for is just a bit of help here to allow us to, to clean this up and, and be able to move forward together.
Understand, okay. Um, Commissioner Lottis, did you have questions for this, for the applicant?
She's on-
I see Vice Chair Nolan has raised her hand again, let's take that.
Question that I had was, have you, this is to the applicant, have you explored redoing the brick driveway so that it doesn't fall within the, um, over the property line?
I haven't, but it would be next to impossible, the way things are done, there's a hedge, there's a wall, I would have to take all of that down in order to move the driveway over. It was a very strange configuration that they came up with. I, I've never, I, I don't, I don't understand it, because you don't have to move it that far over to avoid the driveway. It, it would have been so simple.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis?
Uh, yes, I, I have two questions. Um, one is just to understand the site plan. Um, what, so, between the red line that shows the existing property line and the blue line that shows the proposed, there are, uh, two parallel, um, dashed lines, and what is that indicating?
It says existing lot line to be adjusted, but it's actually the red line.
There's something, is there another easement in there, would it, it's like, there, there, there-
Oh, there's another arrow there, okay.
Can I, this is David, can I answer that question for you?
Sure.
If you look in the easement per title report, there's actually a easement that runs parallel, that's what those two lines are. There's an easement for, uh, you, to public utilities that runs through that.
Okay, okay, I thought maybe there was an easement, so it is another easement, okay.
Right, but it's a utility easement.
Okay, and then maybe this is for Mr. Calick. Um, so, yes, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the precedent-setting nature of creating a, a substantially more, um, substandard lot than currently exists. And, and I don't quite understand, um, uh, have you ever considered, so where you've got the blue line, um, you know, just running that, uh, as a straight line, uh, clear through from the front property line to the rear, you'd have a better balance of giving a piece of the property to, to B as well as to A. Um, and I'm just, uh, I don't know how that, you know, the sum total of that, uh, calibrates, but, um, that would, that would be a more equal exchange, and I'm just wondering if you've considered that at all.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you for the question, and, and I apologize, because it, it sounds like you all have, uh, an exhibit before you that's in color that, that we don't necessarily have, so I'm, I'm not familiar with the blue line versus the red line versus-
No.
That's okay.
It's just the, uh, exists, no, wait, it's the existing property line versus the proposed.
Yeah, what I can, what I can tell you is, we have prepared, geez, and, and David can probably, uh, because he's the one who actually prepared them, we prepared multiple different, uh, stabs of this, um, and have, have presented them to city staff, um, over the past year or so, uh, and, and so the version that's before you, candidly, is the most elegant version that we've been able to figure out, that does the least amount of changes to what's there today, but still allows us to not have to redo an entire driveway and, and go through this gymnastics exercise. Um, so I can tell you with, with absolute certainty, we have made extreme steps, we've tried, uh, every which way to draw this line in a way that is the, the least possible request, uh, to make before you this evening.
But if you did draw that as a straight line through, it would not impact the existing driveway.
No, it would impact the gravel path.
You know, if it's, there's a hedge there, and there is, uh, pavers and so forth, um, it would mainly impact the, um, the gravel area, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah, so it would pack, impact the gravel area, it would impact some landscaping as well. And look, I, I understand your concern, and I respect your concern about precedent, I think that's very important. Um, as I look around along this entire block, and the precedent set, you know, as staff stated, there's virtually no lot that actually conforms to the, uh, full city one acre standard. So, um, you know, I don't know that we would be necessarily setting a new precedent here. Um, I get that, yes, you're absolutely right, the facts are the facts, that we would be reducing the square footage of one lot, but as I said earlier, we would also be increasing the square footage of another, to frankly be a larger lot than many of the lots, uh, of the 19 other lots around, along the street. Um, so I think when you weigh the balance of the two, understanding that we are actually increasing one of the lots, and that we're candidly trying to clean up a bit of a mess that was created in the past before, uh, Ms. Carroll had owned the property, uh, you know, and, and bolstered by the findings that we've provided, uh, you know, feel confident and would hope and ask for your, your help in, in moving this forward.
I have a quick question. Um, so when you guys were proposing the, the new adjustment on the lot, on the west side, um, after the, um, well, the west side of the property, um, have you thought about potentially not moving that, um, that back and leaving it at its current distance?
Sorry.
Allowing for more square footage in that, in that area?
Sorry, I'm a little confused about what you're saying, maybe, David, do you understand?
Yeah, I did not understand, John, could you try to-
I apologize, I'm just looking at the, uh, site plan, and on the site plan, on the west side of the property, uh, the, the side of the property where there's, there's no driveways, um, there's the proposed section, and I, I believe this is the proposed section, um, goes farther, uh, south, right, um, in, in, into the property B parcel. So I was curious if you guys have thought about, well, let's, we don't really have to adjust that piece, because that's not impacting the driveway at all. The only part that's impacting the driveway is on the east side of the property, that's, you know, the, where you're moving the easement, I'm sorry, you're moving the property line. But as you have it drawn up, on the west side, there, there's no impact to a driveway there, so I'm just curious on why that piece is, why you're moving that.
If I can just answer, this is David again. Uh, quickly, uh, just to interject, uh, Spencer, if you look at the, uh, agenda for today, the very last page has the, uh, exhibit, and it's way at the last page.
It's what happens when I try to save some ink and print in black and white, I suppose.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's what it is.
And, and I might be looking at this wrong, too, because mine's in black and white as well, but I, I'm, it looks like that I'm looking at the right thing.
Yeah, no, you are, and, uh, so, in, in- And so in, in answer to your question is, we did look at that, but again, that's that area that our client, Ms. Carroll, has always used and utilized for her property, for parking, for turnaround purposes, and so on and so forth. So her keeping that area has always been benefit for her use and not so much as parcel B. Parcel B has only been using it as a drive-through, which we've discussed using the existing driveway. That's not being utilized right now.
Yeah. And, and the only reason I ask is obviously, one of the concerns with the, the city is having, you know, a decrease in the acreage for the new proposed lot, which doesn't necessarily align with some of the other properties in the neighborhood, the other properties in the neighborhood. I don't know, is there any other properties in the neighborhood that have .59 acres available? Or would this be the smallest lot in the area?
Can I answer that question?
Please.
Sure. Of the nineteen lots, seventeen of them are approximately three quarters of an acre, and then two of them are a bit larger. Not quite an acre, but, so yes, it would be the smallest. It would be creating an, an odd, an odd lot.
Right. So if, if we did adjust that piece towards the west side of the property and left that property line there, that would increase the square footage of, of the .59 acres, so in more line to the three quarters and.
Commissioner Trent, just to kind of give you an idea of area, we're probably looking at about six, probably just, probably less, little less than six hundredths of an acre, .06 in that particular area that you're referring to. If we were to not adjust that particular area and only adjust the area where the driveway is crossing along.
Okay.
If you took six tenths out of one and add six tenths to it, or six hundreds, I'm sorry.
Is about fifty-five hundred square feet that is proposed to be taken from lot B and moved to lot A.
Approximately, yes.
About fifty-five hundred square feet. All right. I understand that the, that making one parcel smaller, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, you know, you know, I said I went to the site, but because it was gated, I couldn't go in, and there's really not any parking, but you know, I looked as I drove by twice. But just to be clear, it, it sounds to me, if I'm understanding this correctly from the applicant, on parcel A, there are ancillary hardscape and landscape elements tied into this driveway that project all the way to where you're doing this projected, or proposed lot line adjustment. And that's why, and that's why you're defining where this line is.
Including a lovely enclosure that the original owners paid for the garbage pails. It would cut those off.
Okay. So I, so that's, that's what you're trying to do, you, you want, you're trying to keep all those improvements that were actually made associated with parcel A.
Originally.
The property line, but to keep them separated.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. Because like I said, it was hard to tell when you drive by, and then because the, the map that we're seeing or the plan is not detailed out, there's a lot of elements that are not drawn in or shown. I, I just wanted to get clarity on that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis, Commissioner Trent, any questions?
Yeah, just another quick question. The, the main purpose, obviously, to, of the realignment is to not move the driveway. Is that, is that fair?
Correct. Not to not, to not move the driveway. To not move the driveway and, and candidly to, to keep this property in the family for, for many generations to come, or to be able to maintain at least the main house, parcel A, in the family as long as humanly possible.
Okay. And, and then from the city's standpoint, the ideal would be to have the maximum square footage of parcel B in order to align with the rest of the properties in the neighborhood. Is that fair, staff?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like there, there are alternatives where you could readjust the property line without impacting the driveway and maximizing the square foot. I'm just curious if we could look at something that may be an alternative to this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the plot plan myself, John, and even if you, if you made the property line right along the south edge of the driveway until it reaches where the current property line is, but then you came south and then curved around to the west to preserve the gravel area that the owner wants to keep a part of parcel A, you're still going to be reducing the size of parcel B.
No, I agree, you will, but just not as much.
There's not enough area in the driveway that's in parcel B to make up for what you would take away elsewhere. So you would still make parcel B smaller and parcel A larger. Is that correct? Or have you looked at it from that point of view?
I haven't looked at it that, that closely in terms of the, what you're talking about as an alternative.
Okay.
Your policy?
Yes, yes ma'am. Please go ahead.
And this is a question for staff, and, and you can say yes or no, as appropriate. If, would it be appropriate if staff could or, or asked the applicant to put up a Google map with the terrain showing so that everybody could see what's going on on that property? I think, I mean, part of the issue is, is that it's not clear, we don't have it all, you know, detailed out on our plan.
It shows top of.
Is that appropriate?
I'm happy to if that's easy.
Everyone could see it? Or it doesn't have to be Google, it could be any, any now.
Can you all see my screen?
Yeah.
The screen, but the, the lines are about the same as the white spaces for me.
Yeah. There you go. Okay, then click on the property, the two parcels, and then I think we would probably have a better idea of what's going on.
Sure. Give me a second here. Google's being slow. Okay. So just to orient yourselves, here's the main house, and then here's the guest house, here's the driveway, and here's the enclosures over here. I wish that the, let's see if I can get in a little closer here. This is probably the best view. See if I can make it a little larger. How's that?
Very good.
Yeah. So now it becomes more obvious why you are suggesting the location of the property line or proposed adjusted property line.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've tried every which way to, to make this as little of an ask as possible of you all this evening, recognizing that, that it isn't an ask, and so that's, you know, I, I appreciate you asking for the, the visual. I think this does paint a good picture.
Okay. Do you have more questions, Vice Chair Nolan?
No, I just felt like this request would make it a lot easier for us to understand what's going on on the property.
I agree with you. That's a good view of the property.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lottis, any more questions for the applicant?
No, I have no more questions.
And Commissioner Trent, any more questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, I'm okay. Yeah, I think I'm good.
All right. Then we will close that face, that phase of this item, and it is a public hearing, I believe. So I'll open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone either online or in the house? There's no one in the house, but is there anyone online who wishes to speak on this item, Sheri?
But. How am I getting to it?
We need to get out of full screen again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was. So this person's name is, is, it's hard to, this Amarveer Brier?
Spencer, could you stop sharing your screen? So we, we're having some trouble seeing, um, thank you.
There, Amarveer Brier, right there. Did you want to speak?
You're muted, sir.
I'm, I'm just listening in. I'm not planning on speaking. I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Not planning on speaking. Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing and come back to the commission for deliberation. I would appreciate it if, and I see in the resolution, you call out three sections of the code, 1022606A, B1, and B2 through 5.
We're only identifying two that can't be made.
Okay.
Here. The others we're identifying, but not making any sort of determination.
Oh, B2 through 5, you, you made no specific findings. Okay. B1, it says in reviewing, I'm sorry, in section A, 2606A, there are no special circumstances applicable to the property so that the strict application of the zoning regulations deno, denies the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity. And I would ask again, is there, is there any instance that you can think of anywhere in the city, much less on this block, where a driveway traverses two adjacent parcels? Because that's one, that's one where you're saying there are no special circumstances, and that kind of sounds like a special circumstance to me.
The cert, the special circumstances, if, when reading the rest of that section, are specific to the property and not the improvements to the property. So it would be the location, the shape, the size, the surrounding, the topography, and not the development upon which.
And not the development of the property.
Right. And not only that, but it's, it's like zoning as well. So it's got to be R01.
If, if parcel B were .59 of an acre, would that violate the R01 zoning?
It would be a substandard lot, just as it is.
Which it already is, which everything on the block is.
Exactly.
So, does that change the condition of the non-compliance? It makes it legal more non-conforming, I guess.
It's more non-conforming than a three-quarter acre lot.
Right.
But it's, but they're both non-conforming. It's more non-conforming. .59 versus .74 or 72.
Okay. So section 2606A mentions location, shape, size, surroundings, or topography. I'm sorry, I don't have the code in front of me. But it does not mention development of the property in any sense.
Correct. And just so you know, in the resolution on page two of five, where it says section two and then A.
Yes.
The, the first sentence is taken directly out of the code, well, not the entire first sentence, because I started out with, in reviewing the proposal, there are no special circumstances.
Yes.
But, but the special circumstances applicable to the property, including location, shape, size, surroundings, topography, so that the strict application of the zoning regulations denies the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity under identical zoning district classification. The reason I'm reading it for you is just to let you know that I took that right out of the code.
That's fine. That's fine. As I recall, the city attorney, or perhaps it was his predecessor, Mr. Summers, at one point said, including means including but not limited to.
I'm sorry.
Is that right? Including means including but not limited to?
Again, depends on the context, but including.
Okay. We're, we're looking at page two of attachment A. Section two, first paragraph, it says, no special circumstances applicable to the property including.
Yeah, so it would be including but not limited to.
But not limited to. So other factors could be considered.
So when I read this, is it okay? I was, I was just saying that it, the, the language has to do with the property and not the improvements on the property. And, and I quoted the zoning ordinance or the municipal code stating that including location, shape, size, surroundings, and topography. And I was just stating that it had to do with the property, that this section has to do with the property and not improvements to the property. And perhaps that word including.
I accept that this language is straight from the code.
Correct. And so, but the word including, I think the question, or where, where we're going is, would that be inclusive of things that don't have to do with the property and therefore be include improvements to the property?
The way that I would see that is it's including but not limited to. So it offers the option for additional consideration.
It offers the option of considering other factors that are involved with the property.
With proper justification.
With, with, yeah, with the proper findings. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then in section three of the resolution, it says there are no special circumstances making approval of a variance necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. I presume this is, again, perhaps starting with no special circumstances or special circumstances, this is verbatim from the code?
A, a portion of this is, yes. So I started out the paragraph with my own language, but then, yes, no, no special circumstances making approval of variance. Substantial property right possessed by other property in the same vicinity and zoning district and unavailable for the property for which the variance is sought. Yes, that comes right out of this municipal code.
Okay. It says, other than sharing a crooked pop property line, the subject parcels are not lacking in the ability to preserve and enjoy property rights. If, if the property line stays where it currently is, and I can't understand if the, if the driveway preceded the existing property line, why the existing property line was run through the driveway. But if the property line stays where it is and parcel B is sold to a third party, then that third party could prohibit use of part of the driveway. Is that correct? Because it's part of parcel B.
They, they could, however, with, I mean, I know we talked about the easements and how you could also reserve an easement when, on sale. So you can't grant an easement to yourself, but you can reserve an easement on sale. So that, that is an option.
So granting the easement would become part of the condition of sale?
No, no. So you'd be reserving an easement when you sell. So it's, it's, it's conditional upon reserving of the easement. So.
I don't understand what that means.
So you can't grant an easement to yourself.
Great.
But if you were to sell the property, you could reserve an easement when you're selling the property. So it creates an easement when you're selling, because now you have two different owners. And so you can have a, a, an easement.
You've effectively granted an easement to yourself, but it doesn't take place until there's a new owner of the other property.
That's correct. You would, you'd, you'd reserve, but that would be upon sale. But the easement itself doesn't exist till, uh, couldn't exist until there was two separate owners of a property. I can't speak to exactly the bas, the specifics of how the reservation would work, but I know that there have been sales in the city with easement reservations. However, again, it's very, it'll be very specific in how, how they, I mean, that, that's a, it's a real estate transaction, and it's very specific in how they, how they plan on re, reserving an easement. But it is an option. They can't create an easement now, but again, this is all, this is entirely something that, for the applicant to consider.
And understand, I'm not carrying a torch for parcel A or parcel B or anybody in particular, but I understand the concern of having a driveway that's arguably hard to move that is on two different parcels.
Yeah. So it, it sounds to me like you're trying to figure out other, other solutions.
Are there other solutions that, that allow the owner of parcel A to continue to enjoy the rights of parcel A? to continue to enjoy the rights of parcel A?
And if such solutions exist, then perhaps it's appropriate for the commission to continue this matter and ask staff to work with the applicant to present alternatives and other solutions, if that's, if that's what the commission wants.
Yeah, I hate, I don't know why these three parcels were consolidated into two in such a strange way. But I can see that it's potentially a real problem, the way it exists now. And I'd love to see some kind of a solution that allows the owner of parcel A to really own all of parcel A. Or enjoy the rights of passage and whatever you call it, egress and ingress.
Any such solution, if there is one, would require findings. And so, what's before the commission is, right now, either to approve the resolution or disapprove the resolution, or continue it and ask for staff and the applicant to work on developing further alternatives, supported by findings, so that the commission could, for example, grant the lot line adjustment. But the staff recommendation right now in the resolution is to deny the request, but.
If the lot line adjustment were denied as it stands, and then some alternative solution were found in negotiation with staff, that would require refiling for a new lot line adjustment and variance, and payment of additional filing fees.
Yes, so if you didn't want to subject the applicant to that, then you'd want to continue. If you're happy to, and then if it's going to, if you want to just go ahead and deny it, then you can, then you can make a motion to approve the resolution denying, or you can continue.
Okay. Yeah, my, my personal problem with it right now, and this is a personal problem that I have in probably more areas of the municipal code than I can count, is that things like privileges enjoyed by other property, or preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right, constitute language that to me is so squishy, there's a great deal of movement possible either side of any given line. And I would, I would like to see something where staff and applicant could work out, understanding that a variance is still required, because nowhere on this street can you move a lot line without making some parcel smaller. So I will grant that a variance will be required in any case that involves any lot line adjustment. But I would like to see some additional alternatives. What's the sense of the commission? Vice Chair Nolan?
I would be interested in seeing some options that, or alternatives that may include the easement.
Or a reserved easement, you called it?
The reserved easement, which would take place at the point of sale. Which, if I'm understanding, the applicant, when she first introduced the project, and herself, mentioned that, and I believe in the staff report, that she wanted to sell the other parcel, then essentially, you know, until she sells the parcel, she's fine. But that's when that easement could go into effect potentially.
Vice Chair Nolan, on the, on the point about reserving the easement, the property isn't being sold right now, so, and I get, perhaps, this is a question best addressed to Mr. Kalik on whether his client would be, is that an option for his client? On reserving easement. I'm not sure if we can condition reservation if there is no sale pending. If he's, Mr. Kalik is available.
Sure.
Yes, can I be heard? Okay, great. So a couple things. Number one, this property is not for sale at the moment, so in terms of reserving the easement, that's a bit speculative out in the future. I'm not entirely sure that what the city attorney is portraying is necessarily accurate in terms of how that would work. And it's something that we have explored extensively. And most people candidly would not come before you all to have a conversation like we're having this morning, this evening, without, with that kind of it being the last option. So, candidly, don't think that the easement is, is an option. The other thing I want to just say for the record is, the city attorney is absolutely correct. We could, you all could deny our application. You all could ask us to work with staff, which we're certainly willing to do. You could also candidly approve our request and ask staff to come back with a resolution in support, and we have provided findings to support that resolution. So I just wanted to be clear with everyone that there are kind of three options this evening. Our hope obviously is that you all would recommend approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Lottis, any additional thoughts or questions of anyone in the room?
Well, my thought, thoughts are, I think that I kind of agree with the direction you're going in, Commissioner, or Chair Quilisi, in terms of the driveway. And doing a lot line adjustment that clears up the driveway issue. And I believe that the, there could be some alignment of that common property line that would be closer to, you know, just a straight line across the property. I realize, and because I think there is something, I think we could possibly find some kind of sight hardship in terms of the driveway issue. The luxury or the nicety of having the gravel area, and including that and retaining that right, with the resulting, really unequal sharing of the lot area between parcel A and parcel B, I just have, I have trouble with. So I do think that maybe if we focused on the driveway, and, you know, some findings with regard to that, I would be, I would be more willing to consider that kind of a lot line adjustment. As long as there was a fairly equitable allocation of lot area between the two parcels.
I have a question for staff. If, if there were a way, without regard to anything but the driveway at the moment, but looking at the gravel, it appears to me that if the lot line were changed to run right along the south side of the driveway, or very close to it at least, and then, once you reach the southernmost part of the driveway, from there, go somewhere toward the east, toward the west end of the property. I'm wondering if there might not be a way that no longer changes the sizes of the two parcels. If that were possible, then at least a variance would not be required. Is that right?
Correct. If they were not reducing and making more non-conforming one of the lots, they would not need a variance.
Then there'd be no requirement for a variance.
They would just be looking at a lot line adjustment and not a variance. And then therefore also, the findings would not need to be made. You don't need to make these, the variance findings are very specific. And these type of findings don't need to be made for the lot line adjustment.
And what, what that would result in, what that would have to result in, is losing part of the gravel area that's currently used by parcel A, and granting it to parcel B.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, again, that's not before us today.
That's, that's a hypothetical. But I'm trying to understand the application of the code. If the two parcel sizes don't change, then all we're talking about is a lot line adjustment, which may or may not require commission approval, I don't know, but it would not require a variance.
That's correct.
We'd have to look at that closer. I don't want to give a definitive on that, but that's something that if the commission was to continue it, we could take a look at that closer.
Yes.
And work with the applicant. I also wanted to identify, I also wanted to identify something. I know earlier Commissioner Lottis, and then I believe Mr. Kalik, were talking about precedent setting for variance. Within our code itself, 10-2.2607, which is titled "Precedents", states, "Each application is reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and the granting of a prior variance is not admissible evidence for the granting of a new variance." So they are held on their own weight. It's pretty specific within our code.
In fact, I doubt the consolidation of three parcels into two
Yeah, this code section.
required any variance at all.
Right. Well, but it does because of what they're proposing currently.
Yeah, the new proposal requires a variance. The prior one of consolidating.
Consolidation does not, because both of those were becoming more.
Because it was creating larger parcels.
More conforming, still non-conforming, correct.
Okay. So what's the sense of the commission? What do you want to do, folks?
Continuation, if the applicant was, is open to that. I don't know, I asked Commissioner Trent, too. He might have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I like the idea of a continuation. I think we're in a situation where we're obviously looking at balancing the long-term integrity of the neighborhood by trying to keep the parcels relatively the same size as we can, and having a better balance there. Because it does obviously, you know, impact that neighborhood quite a bit, long-term. So, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Chair Quilisi, if, if, if the direction is to continue, then I think my suggestion would be a motion to continue with specific direction on what the commission wishes the staff to look at, what the, what the direction is to the staff to consider, whether it be alternatives, whether it be other scenarios, et cetera, et cetera. But I, there's, my, my rec, my suggestion to the commission would be, if there's a motion to continue, come with very specific direction to the staff as to why it's being continued.
Is there, and then I would even add, is there specific data or research that you're wanting us to look at or to clarify? If there is unknowns out there that this commission is, is wanting to weigh as a part of this, this variance, let those be known. We'll take a look at those a little bit closer. Provide that information in a follow-up staff report.
Okay. Okay. Vice Chair Nolan, Commissioner Lottis, your thoughts on, on a continuance?
Chair Quilisi, the item that you brought up earlier about the possibility of a lot line adjustment where both parcels are equal, or close to equal.
Unchanged.
Yeah, or not change, actually. And therefore, we would require to have a variance, I think could be included in this continuation.
There are certainly a lot of possibilities moving forward. One might be determining a lot line that does not change the area of the two parcels. Does not change the area of either parcel, but could still include a reserved easement that would allow parcel A to use the gravel area, for example, just, I mean.
For example.
I'm searching for some kind of a solution here. And I'm wondering if, if that's something that would resonate with anyone else. Oh, also, if we continue to a date certain or a date uncertain, the only thing that changes is whether it has to be re-noticed?
That's correct.
So if it's. The filing remains in place.
Correct. If it's continued to a date certain, we don't have to re-notice. If it's continued to a date uncertain, we do have to re-notice.
But then we have a deadline.
Correct.
Okay.
Chair Quilisi, this is Commissioner Pennett. I've been in this discussion, you may not have been aware of it, but I've been, I've been in the meeting for the duration of this discussion.
I saw a smiling face in there, but I couldn't read the name, and I missed it, Jamie. How are you?
It's dark in this room, and so the super doesn't. I was, I'd be interested in more information about the history of the development of the two dwellings on the, on the three parcels. Was that done at the time of the development? Do we know? The development of the properties in general?
As we understand from, from earlier proceedings, the consolidation of three parcels into two was done prior to the current owner having purchased the two parcels, thinking they were three, I guess. And the driveway, the existing driveway that spans the two current parcels was already in place at the time of the sale. Did I get that right? I think.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. Those are the questions I had asked at the beginning. And the residence on parcel A was existing, and then the new owner, Judy Carroll, actually had the dwelling on parcel B constructed.
Right, okay, okay.
Now, I guess the final question is the, this hardscape that is down by the entrance. Well, and it would be helpful, if we are going to have a little more work done on this, to see the, either photographically, or, and, and in, in plan, what that hardscape is about. Just some idea of what would it cost to essentially create two separate parcels that were closer in size rather than further apart in size. There is, how much, what's the cost of this to the, to the potential seller, or the downstream seller of this? And will we be disadvantaging one of these parcels by carving up this gravel area in a different manner than is currently anticipated? Or is giving more, more balance to that? I'm just sort of wondering, what's the hardship? How much are we sort of mucking around with Ms. Carroll's property here? And, and will it make it much more difficult to sell the other parcel at the time, because it's a disadvantaged parcel by some, by some.
Yes, okay.
I like, I mean, my, just listening to this, I like the idea of just using an easement. But if we can't use a, you know, we can't put some kind of reservation of an easement that occurs downstream at the time of the transaction, I'd like that looked at by the city attorney. I guess, unless the city attorney feels 100% certain. I get at some level of uncertainty between the parties, the two attorneys, there, and I'd like to be really certain that we couldn't solve this with an easement or a reservation of an easement. But I don't, and I also don't want Ms. Carroll to spend any more money on her attorney than is necessary. So, I'm not a big fan of long-drawn-out processes, but I can see the issues. That's my, Mr. Chair, that's my, my observation.
Okay. I'm certainly not a real estate attorney myself. I'm not any kind of an attorney. But let me, let me try, let me try a motion and see how it flies. I would move that we continue this item, Lot Line Adjustment 21-001, and Variance 21-001, to a date uncertain, and ask staff and the applicant to further negotiate the terms of a lot line, a potential lot line adjustment, with, with two things in mind. One, that insofar as possible, and it seems to me more than possible, that the current areas of parcel A and parcel B be retained as they are. And, and we'll see where the lot line goes at that point, to retain the size of the two parcels. And then, discuss with potentially the city attorney, potentially the applicant, as well as staff, other possible scenarios where the usage of the gravel area at the west end, southwest end of parcel A still be available for. at the west end, southwest end of parcel A, still be available for use by the owner of parcel A in in the event of the sale of parcel B. Is that, did that all sound right, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, um, as long as, sorry. Yes, as long as, I think, does staff does staff require any further direction?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that's so.
Think that's think that's sufficient?
So there's a motion now?
Now, I would I would say this, there was this driveway discussion. If you would like us to do research for the R O one zone as it relates to the driveways, we can certainly come back with data on that as well, in terms of driveways over property lines.
Yes, I would I would like to know if there are any other instances of driveways that that cross parcel lines that are owned by different parties.
They can do that. And so the motion then is to continue.
To continue to a date uncertain.
A date uncertain or a date certain?
A date uncertain.
Uncertain.
Uncertain. And to ask.
We could make it, um, we could make it a certain date, but put it, you know, a month or a month and a half out.
I I hesitate to to guess what time it's going to take to work through all of this.
With staff input on that.
And and I don't I don't feel the same urgency of setting a date certain as as I might if if the current owner had had immediate plans to sell parcel B.
I I think the recommendation.
Absent that, I would, I'd rather let it run for a little while.
Given given the need for research and the discussions between the applicant and staff, I think the preference from staff is date uncertain. And especially, I think the city attorney was also going to be doing some research of, and so date uncertain would be, I think, advisable.
Be easier to work with.
Correct.
For sure. Well, anyway, there's there's my motion, folks. Is anyone of a mind to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
And can I just ask one question, Steve?
Of course.
So your motion was to basically keep the properties of the size that they are now?
No.
That's correct. So that parcel A remains the same size with the lot line adjustment as parcel A is today and be the same.
I'm sorry, Chair Quilisi, the motion was to s- to come back, to continue to to consider that option, not to approve that option.
Oh, okay, but I mean.
With the idea in mind that we could do that and not require a variance.
Go in that direction.
Yeah.
Chair Quilisi, excuse me for interrupting. I keep seeing Spencer raising his hand and I don't know if you can see him.
Well, the, uh, they're they're.
We're in deliberations now, thank you.
I just didn't know if you could.
We could reopen the public hearing again.
You can do that.
But uh.
If you'd like to. I think if you want to hear from Mr. Kalik, you can reopen the public hearing. Perhaps it's best.
Anyone object to reopening the public hearing and hearing from the applicant?
No objection.
No objection.
Hearing no objection. We'll reopen the public hearing. Mr. Kalik, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'll brief, I'll be brief. Um, I just frankly, I want to set everyone up for success in this. Um, if we are going to go back and work with staff, which we're more than happy to do. Um, my concern is candidly, we've been working on this for a bit over a year now. The version that's before you is frankly vastly different than what we submitted originally. Um, staff has given us feedback. We've kept moving the line, moving the line. And I I think candidly, we're pretty much about as far as you can get in terms of drawing a line to have the least amount of impact as possible. Um, so I'm all for, you know, if more research wants to be done, more discussion, I'm a big fan of discussion, but being mindful, I don't want my client to have to spend more time and money here than's necessary. But I'm just, I want to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for for failure or for us to come back and have basically the exact same discussion um, in in short order here after having taken up a lot of staff time to do so. So, you know.
I agree.
My request, my request would be twofold. Number one is, um, I would still love to to see if there's a go to be able to get to approve, to ask staff to come back with a reservation, resolution for approval of what's before you today, given that there has been a tremendous amount of work done. But number two, um, time is important. Uh, and so I want to make sure that we don't just go off for multiple months here. So I would request if we could set this out for a date certain, perhaps a couple of weeks, a month from now. Um, if we need more time, we we could talk about that. But uh, you know, I it's, we've already spent more than a year to get to this point and I want to be able to, whether whether this is going to go forward or not, I think we need some certainty around that. So I would ask for an approval first and foremost, or at a minimum for a date certain, no more than a month out.
Okay, no more than a month out. Well, that that would be like the seventeenth of November.
The second meeting in November. I just want to point something out. I know Spencer's identifying that it's been a year, but this application came in when, in July? April. It hasn't been a year. I just want to clarify that for the record. Has there been a lot line adjustment that came in at one point? Yes. Did they withdraw? I believe so. So yes, has, well, hold on, I'm still talking. There was an inquiry regarding that. Has there been discussions? Yes. Has there been an official application come in? Yes. Has it been a year in terms of what we've been looking at? No. I want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Understand. And 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 for the record, I want to say, um, it it is our job as planning commissioners to enforce the code unless there's a good reason not to. And it's and staff's mission, I would say, is pretty much the same, but they have perhaps less latitude in deciding there's a good reason not to enforce the code as written. And so staff is somewhat constrained compared to the commissioners in in terms of the flexibility that might lead to a solution, however fair or unfair it might be. And so I don't I don't fault staff at all for digging heels in on two findings. That's that's your opinion and that's that's, you're doing what you're supposed to do. Uh, back to back to the commissioners.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I guess, yes, we'll close the public hearing again. Okay, and we'll go back to deliberations. The applicant having said a month is sufficient time, would you entertain, um, Vice Chair Nolan, I think you seconded the motion.
I did.
Would you entertain an amendment to the motion? I I guess that's it. Do I amend my own motion or ask ask leave of the seconder to say, would you agree, rather than continuing to do a date uncertain, that we continue to a date certain of November seventeenth?
Yes, I would agree with that. I I'm wondering if we should check with staff if they, uh, if that's an adequate amount of time.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Oh, I was going to say, yes, I agree, but I'm wondering if we should check with staff uh, to make sure there's um, an adequate amount of time and, you know, that there's an opening in the agenda to add this um, item on November seventeenth.
Yeah, following that, I think it's uh, November third, so it'd be December tenth, I think, would be the subsequent meeting, is that right?
December first.
December first, okay.
Yeah.
I would be open to either one. I'd prefer that that would be a little bit more generous in terms of working with the applicant. But it is up to the commission.
That would that would give us six weeks instead of four.
Yeah.
There are holidays coming up as well, so.
Yeah, and yes, Halloween, or not Halloween, but Thanksgiving impacts the third two-week segment there.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, yes. So what do you think? Would would December first still be acceptable, Vice Chair Nolan?
I'm I'm okay with that.
Okay, then I will amend the motion to continue this to a date certain December first with the suggestions to staff and the applicant to look at the areas already discussed.
Is there a second to the amended motion?
I I think Vice Chair Nolan said she was agreeable to that change.
I could second my second that.
Okay, okay. So so the the amended motion has a second.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion of that motion?
Can I mention that we already have two DRPs on that date?
Oh, that's why I was wondering, checking with staff to make sure that.
So.
Now we know, we may have to.
How does the staff load look for December first?
End it again.
It's it's tentative. I I think that December first date is fine. As long as the commission is okay with that.
Then Sherri, let's let's have a roll call on the motion to continue to December first.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for your patience in in our going through all this deliberation. I look forward to seeing the next iteration.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you, staff, and thank you applicants.
Thank you.
All right, item four is the general plan update circulation element. And um, why don't you take us through that?
Thank you. Uh, so we are in kind of in the middle of the general plan update. And right now, I'm kind of providing the commission with an opportunity to to kind of wrap their heads, this commissioner, around each of the elements, to kind of get familiar with it, right? Cozy and 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 nice and cozy with it. So this is the second element that we've kind of been looking at. The land use element was the first one. The second one is the circulation element. Um, the anticipation.
Housing also.
Yes, the housing. Although I will have to admit, if you're looking at the order here, I will more than likely skip the housing element since we've spent a considerable amount of time on that. Let's let that breathe for a little bit.
Yes.
I I anticipate that we will be coming back and having a discussion on that. But uh, there's other elements that, like, for instance, the safety element that haven't had the opportunity to kind of get the commission's um, eyes on. Uh, and then obviously the environmental justice element, which uh, is going to be more of a, this is what it could look like versus this is what we already have, right? So it's a.
That's a new, that's a new element.
It is a new element. So the circulation element itself, um, what I'm asking for is for the commission to really kind of review it, but also to focus on the um, the policies themselves. There's twenty seven policies folded into the circulation element. And I'd like to actually read uh, the first paragraph within the introduction, which I think really does a good job of framing the the element itself, which reads that Ojai circulation element addresses broad issues of physical mobility, how goods and people move about about within the community, as well as how goods and people move between Ojai and the outside world. Circulation is one of the most pervasive issues of the general plan and is related to land use, community design, noise, air quality, and energy consumption. Transportation issues affect not only the local area, but also require coordination with the county and regional and state agencies. There's a lot going on within that first paragraph, and I think it really starts to set the tone for what the circulation element is, what it does, what it serves, um, in terms of the community, previous, current, and in the future. So really what the what I'm looking for here tonight is for the commission to kind of absorb this element. If there's any questions or comments on this element, I think now is the time to to bring those to the to the forefront. And just know that we are working with the consultant on upcoming workshops, for instance, with the general plan update. So uh, we are, we are gearing up. You guys saw the um, the schedule, at least the preliminary schedule, um, from what we're looking at moving forward. We're diving into and leaning into the kind of the meat and potatoes of of this general plan update process. So I think getting the commission and making making this commission aware of each of these elements and how they are all intrinsically kind of interwe- interwoven, I think you'll start to see that even with the the update as it as it continues to move forward. So with that, if the commission has any questions of staff, um, or any comments for that matter.
Okay, just one quick question, and then we'll get to the rest of the commission. Do you expect, as a part of this review, that we will see a redline version of the circulation element the way we did with the housing element? This is only thirty pages, so.
Yeah, I can't I can't promise the redline version only because if the formatting of the general plan.
It's really strange.
If if it changes, you're going to see the whole thing's going to be red.
I'd look forward to that.
Yeah, so if if that's the case, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult to do a redline version. In addition to that, I've been looking for these elements in a Word format. And now converting them over from a PDF is 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 doable, but there's a lot of work that goes into that. And I I can tell you that would be done by.
A lot of broken glass when you convert back from PDF.
That would be city staff doing it and not not the consultant.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's let's hear from the commissioners. Vice Chair Nolan, questions for staff?
Um, actually, it's really more of a comment.
Comments, sure.
I I have in the past read the circulation element. And I will say, Chair Quilisi and I have been active members up until recently because we've been on hiatus with the COVID, but with complete streets, which falls under the circulation element. And it's so interesting to read through it and see how relevant this um, the language is, you know, even though this was written over twenty years ago. It's still very appropriate. You know, there's a couple of minor things that could be changed, but I found that very interesting. And I just wanted to to make that comment.
Yeah, I think the I think the goals and objectives and and the philosophy behind the circulation element is still quite relevant today.
Yes.
We might want to change a word here and there. But there were some interesting things that I came, I I read in detail about the first two-thirds of this and skimmed the rest of it, and I'll get back to the rest of it. But Commissioner Lottis, do you have comments or questions for staff?
Well, I I haven't had a chance to read it. Um, and I, so is is there, but that was, um, I was going to ask the two of you about the complete streets. And um, so so do you feel the complete streets is addressed in here and the language that's necessary? The current language and the way we talk about complete streets, it's all it's all here?
You know, um, complete, the the term complete streets actually wasn't even in circulation or in in policy when this was written. Um, it actually, I think, went into effect probably like about two thousand and nine, I believe it was, when the complete streets mandate came through with the state. So language like that would have to be changed, but I do know we did work on a complete streets policy, which was adopted by City Council, and the complete streets master plan.
Yeah, okay.
It's also adopted. So and then it's, and also that what's another ancillary document not shown here was the bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was produced, um, forgot what year it was. I bet um, Councilmember Francina knows that date, but that's also, I I guess, what you would call a subset or ancillary document. Nineteen ninety eight. Thank you.
Did you say, so that's the bicycle master plan?
Bicycle and pedestrian.
The bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
Because of my other comment, yeah.
And a complete streets master plan.
Right.
Right. That we def- yeah, um, and we, I don't, um, I do remember talking about this, and I think that people talked about it maybe in the visioning. They talked about the need for a network of sidewalks that allowed uh, better better movement on this on the streets where we, uh, on on certain streets um, to to create a complete network and allow families with strollers. You know, that maybe uh, people, disabled people, uh, a better better movement and and just kids being able to walk to school or uh, and and that I really wanted to see attention on the sidewalk network with a plan, with an actual plan of where where additional sidewalks would go or necessary improvements would go.
So the basis of that is in the complete streets master plan.
Okay.
Then in addition, and Chair Quilisi will remember this, um, our complete streets um, meetings, which were open to the public, a good percent of our meetings were us doing work on the street, so to speak. So we actually worked in conjunction with Public Works Department and their capital improvement schedule and um, you know, walked certain districts or areas and neighborhoods based on that capital improvement schedule and identified areas where improvements could be made. But also in the um, the complete streets master plan, we did have identified what we call like, say, primary and secondary streets, connectors, what have you, where there should be sidewalk where there should be sidewalk connections and, what's the word that I want? Walkability. We, we found out like say on Park Road, for instance, there were so many obstacles that if you were in a wheelchair, you couldn't even be on Park Road to get from Ojai Avenue to Grand without bumping into impediments, mailboxes, trees, shrubs, telephone poles, wires, et cetera. So yeah, we, we do have a lot of that identified in that document. And then, like I said, additionally with the Public Works Department.
Okay.
Collected a lot of data, yep. And, and one of the, one of the persons who, who attended many of the complete streets committee meetings was seriously vision impaired. Not completely blind because there were things we could see that she could see. But as we walked around, things like an oak tree next to a sidewalk, but the tree leans. A service dog is not going to notice that there's part of that tree hanging over the sidewalk, five feet off the ground. But a vision impaired person with a service dog could very easily smack head on that tree. So it was, it was, you know, really an instructive moment for the rest of us on the committee, I think, to see some of those things. Not, I mean, we can all sort of envision, how do you get a wheelchair from here to there? But other things that you wouldn't necessarily think of, if you're regularly sighted and you're just walking down the street, you're going to avoid obstacles that a person that's not in that position might not know to, to walk around. So there's, there's a lot of work to be done or at least, I don't know what sort of accommodations to make. But Kathy's right. We, we gathered a lot of data, walked a lot of blocks, looked at curb cuts, looked at, at corners and is there a place for, excuse me, a wheelchair to get from the sidewalk down to the street and back again? And there's more to be done because I know we didn't cover every street in the city.
Right. In addition to that, when we first, I was in 2000, starting in 2010, we actually went out for a fair majority of the streets in Ojai, did walkability data collecting using a form of walkability index data sheets. And we actually had those scored by a different organization and got the score back. And I have the hard copies, but we had copies made and the city has all of that information.
Right.
So we, essentially we're looking at not only street width, sidewalks. We did speed checks. We looked for parking. Was there bike access? Were there side amenities like trash cans or benches, trees? Just, you know, basically anything that could be happening on the street. And so the city has all that information and that was kind of referenced, I believe, in the-
Yeah.
Well, hopefully that could be even put in, that kind of data could be compiled and put into an appendix for the, for the circulation element. But I, and I also think we, I think we need to think of policies that maybe state that we're going to actually implement a requirement for bicycle racks with certain kinds of improvements in commercial. Do we have a requirement now?
Yeah, it's already in there.
Oh, okay.
Commercial project.
Why don't we, but we don't get them?
Well, they're supposed to be in, I remember requesting numerous times from, and I don't believe, Lucas, I think it was pre you being our community development director, but that it'd be automatically on a commercial projects placed in the conditions of approval.
Yeah, we need to, we need to make some kind of a change because I don't think it's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me look into that further.
Now that you, now that you mention it, we didn't say anything about bike racks opinion.
No, we didn't. And I-
But there may, there may be some along that strip center. I don't know.
Right, there's actually already, there's bike racks already within that, the Fitzgerald Plaza.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then that, that maybe-
But it, but it should be addressed because it is in the code. It should be in the conditions of approval.
Okay, yeah.
Right.
And, and I think we might have to be somewhat imaginative in terms of, but we, there's some climate change aspects here that come into play considering the contribution of, you know, vehicular emissions. You know, in terms of providing charging stations, where they're going to be, what's the rationale for it? And, and possibly talking about some peripheral parking with expanded shuttle usage thing. I mean, I just think we, I don't know the answers off the top of my head by any means, but I think there's some things we could creatively think about with this.
I think those might, those might both be worthwhile goals. One, one part of every goal comes down to who pays for it. We need to consider that as we go.
Right. And then two, two of the goals, I believe it was the goals that I read it. Oh yeah, here we go. Actually, objectives, and this ties back into the environment as well, is water and stormwater capture. I know we talk about that a lot, but I think it needs to be looked at even more thoroughly and how that may be addressed in any public works project. And then also the trees on public, on the streets and highways as far as being a part of climate change, carbon sequestration, et cetera. I just think that might need to, should be bolstered.
I, I noticed that in the objectives in attachment A, page, it says page five of 40, in the objectives table there, the next to the last one surprised me a little bit that it was in the circulation element. But it talks about utilities, energy, water, stormwater, and disposal of sewage as well as pedestrian, bicycle, and automobile traffic. And as I say, I haven't gotten all the way through to the end of the circulation element with a detailed reading, but I don't recall seeing anything more about utilities in the rest of it. So I think pending, pending my finding it somewhere that I haven't found it yet, I think one thing that we might take a look at is how we should deal with utilities in the balance of the circulation element.
Yeah, these are all fair points.
Page 22 has public utility corridors. Page 22 of attachment.
Page 22, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd made notes as far as page 33, but I guess I missed that. Public utility corridors, yeah. I did see public utility corridors. Maybe that's all that needs to be said. I don't know. I'd just like to take another look at it. I, but before I talk more, how about Commissioner Trent? Do you have comments or questions for staff? Oh, you're muted, John.
Oh no, it's okay.
Sorry, this is up in my, my ear. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I know. The, the main comment is that I've found was just what you pointed out was the utility piece. But I don't know if there's ways to expand on that for how, you know, like for example, micro grids, things like that, getting off of, you know, reliance on Edison. I don't know if there's ways to do that in this circulation element. It might be addressed somewhere else. But just looking for ways to, you know, future proof the city for some sort of natural disaster. Power gets cut out, you know, water shortages, things like that. You know, addressing, I, I think some of this circulation element mentions a lot about traffic calming outside of just the city of Ojai. It talks about the Ojai Valley. And it talks about need for expansion of, you know, state highways and things like that, which I, I think we're probably going the other way in regards to trying to eliminate as many cars as we can off the roads versus adding more cars, cars and expanding roads. So I think that, you know, we need to look at that. So yeah, I think definitely there's lots of areas for improvement, that's for sure. And, and I apologize, I haven't had a chance to go through it all in complete detail, but that was kind of my first, first glance at things.
Very good. And Commissioner Bennett, comments or questions at this point? Obviously, we're going to come back to the circulation element.
Sure, it would have to be a question. And the question is, anywhere in the circulation element, are motorcycles teased out and dealt with separately as an, as a, as an issue or as a, a vehicle with separate impacts and separate needs?
See it.
Automobiles?
No.
Only, well, only since we're now spending a lot of time thinking about putting outdoor dining on Ojai Avenue. If you've ever sat at any of the outdoor dining, when a group of motorcycles go by, you know how unuseful the ability to sit outside can be because you can't talk. And by the way, the same thing's true with a number of the, of the gravel hauling trucks and other things which barrel through and come slamming to a stop at a traffic light. So I just, that's a, a question, I think, more than anything is, is noise, sound considered in this? And then are some of these things like bicycles and motorcycles, which share the road with, with vehicles, cars, cars and trucks? Is that adequately, again, teased out? Because we are a site that people who ride motorcycles like to come, come to on the weekends. And we are a site that people who ride bicycles like to come to. And there are some statutory issues around bicycles in terms of share the road where the state has attempted to encourage the use of bicycles. But now it's a part of our, our tourism is bicycle tourism, which I think a lot of people would say is kind of tourism that we should seek to have. Because it exposes the tourists to the wonderful amenities, natural amenities that we have surrounding the city and in the city.
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back on that piece, Jamie, because you brought up a good point. What, what kind of leeway does the city have with Highway 33? I mean, obviously it's a state highway. It's Caltrans. I mean, there's not really, what, what can we do regarding that street? Is there anything?
The 150 is a, is a state highway too.
Yeah, both. Yeah. So I mean, is, could we put traffic calming in there? Can we do stuff like, I mean, I don't know.
With Caltrans-
Yeah, I mean, anything that you would-
Probably ATPs do that.
Noise regulation, we can certainly do something about that, I think.
I mean, anything that you're, that you're proposing within Caltrans right away needs to go through Caltrans. I mean, ATP, ATP is a, is a great example of that and that's-
I'm wondering-
150 and the 33.
Yeah. Does, does the city have a police power to regulate otherwise legal noise levels from motorcycles? I suspect not, but I think we need to ask.
It's when they're not legal. It's when they take off their mufflers.
If they, if they take mufflers off, then it's, then they're not, they're not driving legally. I, I wouldn't dispute that.
Other cities, other cities have dealt with this and they, they, I mean, you know, it's not perfect, but I, I, we had this conversation before. I think, I think the, the staff can look into it. But I think there's-
That's something to-
It might be something.
Something to research. I would say this, if, if commissioners are aware of other cities that are doing this, like I know there have been commissioners that have identified that there are other cities doing it. I'd be curious to, as to what cities those are and I, I can certainly look into that further.
Certainly, certainly like to, if you tell staff about it.
Yeah, I believe there was-
You could check Laguna Beach, for sure.
Laguna Beach is the one where they had decibel meters on, on motorcycles.
Right.
So someone in the city staff there perched on the main street with, with a decibel meter and watched as motorcycles went by?
The police, the police use decibel meters.
Police.
Okay.
But, but, but the regulation, it can be handled. There's, there's, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not an expert, but I think that some of the regulations, some of the, the really loud noise impacts can be handled with noise, noise meter monitoring.
Yeah. Well, I, I can personally testify, you don't have to be on Ojai Avenue to be disturbed by motorcycle sounds along Ojai Avenue. You can be a block or two off and still be painfully aware of motorcycles going by. Commissioner Bennett, any other comments or questions?
Not at this point.
Okay.
That's good information. I, I've taken some really good notes here.
And I don't want to get down in the weeds, but I've got a few, just-
I agree.
A few little comments.
Yeah, but no, this is good. Thank you all. And next up will be the safety element. So just know that that's, that's forthcoming and we'll circle back around in the, in the near future. This, this is every two weeks, so expect to be, we're getting a heavy dose of the general plan update currently.
Hey Lucas, one more, one more quick question, Lucas. With the circulation element, does it also include a traffic study? I know we talked about that before and the city hasn't done one for quite a while. Yeah, with parking, parking study, traffic study.
Absolutely. Circulation includes parking as well as, as well as traffic, absolutely. Traffic studies, parking studies, exactly.
Okay.
That's all within the wheelhouse.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Just a couple of quick questions that, that come to mind. And if they're too far off the, off topic, let me know. I'm looking at page five of the general plan of the element, page eight of attachment A. It talks about there having been a plan to put a traffic light at Ojai Avenue and Bryant Street. Did the county congestion management plan remove that light? I, I could see no reason for it to be gone, but it was on the map.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that specific. I can look into that and, and do a little bit of research to see what's going on.
Some general questions. I'm looking at the table of characteristics of a livable community. This is on attachment A, page 11. It talks about easy walking distance. Is there, is there a standard for that? Are we talking half a mile or 15 minutes or, or some other equivalent? I'm, I'm really curious.
I'd be curious to see if the pedestrian and bicycle master plan addressed that or at least considered what that reasonable distance-
The phrase easy walking distance sounded like it was a special phrase that was legally defined somewhere. If it, if it is, I'd like to know what it is. If not-
I mean, Nikhil, if you've heard of that phrase, I have not heard of that phrase.
The source is from a federal transit program from 1994. So I have to imagine that that's likely out of date or needs to be updated and maybe further defined. I, just on a lot of the specifics in this plan from 1997, if it's referring to sources or it's referring to a citation, I would-
It's all dated, obviously.
It's all dated, yeah.
Chair Quilisi?
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead, Vice Chair Nolan.
I mean, just comment and say now, you know, and this would be more updated. A lot of times it's the quarter mile walk. In other words, if you could walk a quarter mile to site, to amenities like the store and the bank, that's used a lot frequently. And then more recently, I've seen the 15 minute bike ride thrown into the mix as well. So when you're actually designing, I mean, in our case, because we're so built out, it may or may not happen. But it's supposed to be the flexibility and the ease of being able to get to normal, everyday amenities.
Yeah, that's actually a really good point. The quarter mile is definitely a walkable piece. There's also the first and last-
Quarter mile or?
15 mile bike, quarter mile walk.
Yeah, there's also something referred to as the first and last mile and that was something Metro put out a few years back where if you can get to mass transit and then have your destination within that mile of that, of that stop.
I remember something in state law lately about areas within a half mile of a major transit hub.
Yeah.
Which I don't believe we have here anywhere.
Yeah.
We have, we have an hourly bus that goes to Ventura.
That's our hub.
And we have a sort of intermittent service from the trolley. But I don't think either one of those would, would constitute what the table calls- well-planned and designed transit. At least, that's on page 11.
One other thing we might see also is, that wasn't around at the time this was written, was vehicle miles traveled. BMT might somehow be.
Certainly become a piece of data that's considered in a lot of places.
Absolutely.
I'm looking at, at page 12 of attachment A, it talks about speed humps as opposed to speed bumps. I think, I think back to something that came before the planning commission, maybe it was only in public comment, but the folks that live on Drown Street were complaining about high-speed traffic thereon and asking for speed bumps. And I'd never heard of speed humps before.
I think that's just, that might be a typo.
No, it says speed humps. And then later it says, they represent a lesser risk to vehicles than do traditional speed bumps.
They have more of a subtle, they have more of a subtle where it's still, I mean, you're going to bottom out if you're going too fast. Exactly.
To denote it.
And Public Works, obviously, is looking into those matters on a regular basis for all the streets, so.
Okay. Now, there's a lot of talk about trails and I think we need.
Steve, I don't necessarily want to go page by page. You're getting, you're almost getting into the weeds here. I want us to make sure that we're staying above it. Okay. All right.
I did, I did want to ask one other sort of off-topic question, I guess. Page 16 of attachment A. And this is something that we've seen on other maps, probably maps in the back of our books right now. Talking about the sphere of influence. And I'm wondering if anybody knows the provenance of the sphere of influence, because it isn't very much bigger than the city limits. It takes up some property up, up Maricopa Highway.
You mean, in terms of, of what?
In the national forest, but.
What does the sphere of influence encompass currently?
Come about and, and.
History of this sphere?
Who decided what it is?
Oh.
And if we wanted it to be bigger than it is, for example, how would we go about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a process of working through LAFCO.
Yeah, that, that's a LAFCO defined, so if we.
LAFCO designed the sphere?
LAFCO defined, so sphere of influence is, is.
Okay, well, we'll give up on that one.
I would, yeah, I would, I would, you're getting into the weeds on that, on that piece. And that's not necessarily circulation related.
Well, only in the sense that circulation just outside the sphere of influence affects what goes on inside.
It does. It certainly speaks to land use. And as I think I've identified to the commission, each of these elements touch each other. They're all interwoven. They don't stand independent. Once they stand independent, they crumble. So they all, they're all interwoven, absolutely.
I, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Pelosi, I've got a question. I don't know where, where it figures. But I know that the parking issue and circulation issue, all these things are interrelated. And, and the question of publicly owned real estate for parking. And I know that, that parking, as is the case in most cities, is in short supply in the retail areas. Very often that parking is actually taken up by the employees of the, the, the same retail establishments that want to have more parking in and close to the, their stores.
Close to the front door, sure.
And, and I know that in some communities, and unfortunately, I'm now getting used to just a little bit of this. I can't name those communities for you. And I shouldn't bring up this without that, but I do know that there are some communities where the Chamber of Commerce and the, and the community have gotten together, and the Chamber of Commerce has gotten its members to park someplace other than where the customers of the businesses park. But that then requires off-site parking and circulation, a circulation bus or something, not necessarily one that looks like a San Francisco trolley, but maybe one that looks like a little white bus that goes, starts at 7:45 and runs to 9:15, so that employees of the, the various commercial establishments on Ojai Avenue can get to work and, and park someplace and be picked up and taken to their.
Yes, Commissioner Bennett, I appreciate that comment. I, I mean, that, that really kind of gets into how other elements end up speaking to, speaking to each other, the affordable housing. The housing element itself can speak directly to affordable housing and how that, within the community, can then create an alternative mode of transportation other than a vehicle. So bicycle or walking, right? So it, they all feed into each other, like I was saying before. And I appreciate, and certainly I've taken a lot of notes here today. So I think that certainly spearheads the conversation moving forward regarding the policies and then the, the element itself, so.
Okay, I, I just had one more, more and more question. Page 36 and 37 talks about special studies and programs, a parking study, a bicycle and pedestrian crossing study, bicycle and pedestrian action plan. I think we, I think that was actually done, though I'm not sure it was subsequent to 97. And a pedestrian enhancement district guidebook. I'd sure like to see some of those. Or even to know if they were done subsequent to May of 1997.
That's actually a good point. I know, for instance, the parking study was done on more than one occasion, I think actually two. We had two parking studies. The others, I would have to, pedestrian.
The bicycle and pedestrian master plan, I know there is one out there, but I don't know when it was done.
Yeah. There's other, there's other pieces that I can look into further and come back with some, some information, or even share the information via email, just so that everybody's aware that whether or not some of these things have even been done or, or addressed.
My last, my last question is for the city attorney. And that is, when we read about these things and the complete streets master plan, which I worked with Vice Chair Nolan on a little bit, I was part of the committee. And other master plans and such that we've seen named in here. What is, what is the legal precedence of those documents compared to the municipal code?
Municipal code always takes precedence.
Okay, they're just, they're adjuncts, they're appendices, who knows what?
Correct, they're guidelines. And so you, they're fine.
Design guidelines, too, that fall in the same category, I guess.
Exactly. And so a specific, I mean, a general plan, everything has to be, has to be conformed to the general plan. And, and if there's a specific plan, a specific, specific plan adopted by ordinance, it has to conform. But these guidelines and policies adopted by resolution are advisory. And, or, and, and the commission may consider them, but ultimately what controls is the, what was adopted by ordinance and the code itself. So.
Okay, okay.
Oh.
Very good. Any more questions out there? All right, why don't we move on to item five, then? Future agenda items. My first question is, where's El Roblar? I, I, I don't know if, if all the commissioners actually had a tour of the property. Vice Chair Nolan and I did, as a pair, have a single tour of the property. And I remember in the discussion at the end of that, the owners of the property were under the impression that their case was coming back to the commission tonight. And I said, no, it was not. It had been, it had been continued to a date uncertain.
They may have wanted it to come back on tonight's agenda, but unfortunately, they did not provide the information in a Tommy manner. So I will say this, they have provided staff the information, and we are scheduling it for November 3rd.
November 3rd is two weeks from today.
Correct.
Have we put a notice in the paper already?
Yes, the notice is in the paper.
Good.
I, I would also note that on here, you're also seeing AT&amp;T Wireless Telecommunications for November 3rd. That has been subsequently pushed to November 17th. That, so this is, there's, I mean, we're constantly making changes here, to be quite honest.
It's always a fluid situation.
Yeah, it is, it is fairly fluid. General plan update, I can tell you, is on every agenda currently, and that's not changing. So just be aware that that's a consistent, that's a constant moving forward. But some of these other items that have applications and we're processing, I'm noticing that things either are changing or information is still incomplete. And we, and while we're thinking it's going to be scheduled then, we don't have a crystal ball in some of these circumstances.
Right, okay.
So. The other one that's impending is Ojai Rancho Inn. And I, as much as I'd like to say that I have a, a date for that, I do not at this point. So it's still looming. We're waiting to get confirmation to move forward here.
Well, I don't, I don't want staff to bring the commission anything that doesn't comprise a completed application.
I agree.
So, so it's just, it's kind of painful to see this stuff continue to roll forward, but if the applicants are not providing the information that we need to make a decision, then for me, that's an easy one. We don't, we don't talk to it yet.
Right.
Any other questions on future agenda items from commissioners?
Let me just say that I, I was not in the meeting for the disclosure site visits and ex parte contacts. I made site visits to both the Pizza Parlor and Jersey Mike's site. And I, I had my own tour of El Roblar. Which I was, they, four people showed up from their side. I thought it was going to be one person who was going to take me on a tour, but.
I think we had four or five, Kathy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, I think, four.
Yep. So I, I would, so forward that for when we come back with Hotel Roblar, but I appreciate that information at this point.
I just want you to know.
Yeah, pause that for right now. I don't want us to get into.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, exactly.
Or it's not agendized.
Next thing is the, the Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council meetings. They meet the third Monday of each month. And I appreciate Sherry letting us all, or running us all in line there. There is one of them February, I'm sorry, not February 28th, January 24th? No, I'm sorry. July 18th is a conflict for me. That is third Monday. And I would be happy to trade with anybody else for, say, January, the 24th is the, is the fourth Monday. Oh, that's probably because of New Year's. They pushed it to the.
Look at the next page, it's the calendar from them.
Yeah.
Because of holidays. It's Martin Luther King.
Yeah, so January, they pushed it back a week.
Because Martin Luther King Day, I think, is what it is.
Oh, third Monday, okay. Well, at any rate, the schedule looks fine to me. I don't know about how anybody else feels about it, except I can't make July 18th. And I'm wondering if I could swap with Vice Chair Nolan for January, the 24th is not the third Monday, it's the fourth Monday.
Yeah, you know, Steve, my term is going to be up in May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll put that on the back burner for now, then, and figure out what to do with July later.
Okay, otherwise I would say, I mean, I could, I could trade with you, but.
That's right. My, my term, I think, is through 2024 now. Think it was, I think I was reappointed last calendar year. Anyway, John and Jamie, I'm sure you've heard of, of the Municipal Advisory Council. This is a group that deals with, deals with the area outside the city limits and generally in the western county. And they, they have made it a permanent part of their agenda each month to ask for a report from the Ojai Planning Commission as to what is going on here, because they do the same sort of thing for the unincorporated areas all around the city. Except what they do is recommendations to the County Planning Commission. They don't, they're not decision makers per se, but they would like to know what we're doing. And so I, I have, I have done this several times in the past, and I just give them three or four bullets of things that we're doing or things that we might expect to be doing in the future. And, and they seem happy with that. So that's what the task is when you're liaison to the Municipal Advisory Council.
Who is the chair of that council?
Oh, boy, I don't know. The only, the only member that I know personally is my dentist, Joe Westbury. I didn't know he was my dentist when I met him. Well, he wasn't my dentist then, but he became my dentist when mine retired.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I know that in the Upper Ojai, there's now a recently formed Ojai community organization up there that operates very much like a other regional organizations that really have no teeth except recommendation teeth.
Right.
A group of people from, from a common, unincorporated area. It's just starting out.
Issues that we do, but they're only in a position to make recommendations to the County Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the next, the next one up is, is, you know, Commissioner Bennett, you will be attend, I'm, you're, you're up here next to attend the November 15th meeting.
On, that's the 18th?
Or the, no, the, November 15th.
Uh, next Monday is Commissioner Trent.
Um, actually, that was the.
The 20th, that was last Monday.
I just wanted to let you guys know, I wasn't able to attend. I completely apologize. I, I don't know how I missed it, but. So if there's another spot, I can make it up. If somebody can't make their, their timeline, or if they want to swap out, I'm more than happy to make up my time. So I apologize for that.
Yeah, I don't think we're, not necessarily swapping out, I think it's just the next person, the next commissioner up would be attending then.
Yeah.
So.
So November 15th is the next one, okay.
And is that me?
Yes.
It is.
Put it on your calendar.
With the meeting.
November 15th.
Yes, make sure you put it on your calendar. Thank you.
And commission member reports. Anything of interest going on besides Jamie, welcome back from Michigan?
Oh, you have no idea.
Any other reports from any of the commissioners? If not, how about from staff? Director?
Yeah, nothing, nothing to report specifically.
Okay, and city attorney, nothing?
Oh, I would, I would like to say, actually, now that I'm thinking about it, just off, Ojai Day was this last Saturday, which was a much more condensed version. We didn't have, well, we did have one street closure, which was signal that allowed for the classic cars to be parked on the street. Uh, but it, city, obviously, the city had a, had a booth wildly successful from what I, from what I can tell. A lot of people, the mandala was put together, painted beautifully, as always, in the same location.
Instead of in the middle of the street.
Right around the fountain. I mean, I even had my littles out there slapping some paint on the concrete. So it was, it was pretty, it was pretty cool to see, I'll have to say, because I didn't get a chance to experience it last year because obviously with the pandemic. And the year before, I just started the week after Ojai Day. So I'd missed it completely again. So it was great to see and to see everybody out there, so.
Well, I was, I was glad to walk around the park and saw the director was stoically manning the community development director's booth.
Yeah. I was there, right, right. And by the way, a lot of really good information and feedback regarding the general plan update. Lots of people getting involved, getting interested, signing up for virtual, so, for emails. So it's great.
Good. I hope we see more people sign up virtually for subsequent.
All ages, by the way, just so you know, all ages, by the way, because I know we're, we're missing some. All ages, by the way. Just so you know, all ages, by the way. Because I know we're, we're missing some, some of the key areas. And we had younger individuals out there that were signing up. So I think that's encouraging. Hopefully we can get them out there and getting some thoughts as well.
Great.
Excellent, excellent. And last but far from least, our city council liaison, council member Francina.
Oh, good evening. Thank you. It's so hard for me to stay quiet at these meetings. God, I have to, I keep, I have to keep biting my tongue. I always want to chime in. You know, looking back, the thing I would really, you know, first of all, we've been working on this bicycle pedestrian master plan actually since 1996. The draft was 1998, it was adopted 1999. So for me, that's, I think that's 25 years, right? 1996, 2021, 22, 25 years. And at the time, we were so hopeful that there would be this dramatic, it was like a mandate, you know, that the whole city would become bicycle pedestrian friendly. But because we have such a small staff and we don't have a, a person, a designated person, that's all they do is, is work on that. It just requires a lot of patience. I think the most important thing to go into the circulation element, you know, is a 25 mile per hour citywide speed limit. And the only place that it could, would be challenged is Caltrans, but they will, is because of the highway running through town. And, but that's where we need it the most. And eventually we'll get our way because there's, at the state level and the national level, they're realizing that the way that we've set speed limits for decades is wrong. I mean, it's just, you know, they base it on what's good for cars. They don't base it on the safety of all the other users of the road. And then Jamie, about the parking, you know, we had a, a very wonderful parking committee just before COVID hit. We were meeting regularly and I was on that committee, as was Jamie from the chamber and Laura Ward and someone from staff. And, you know, and we really need to re, what's the word, re-indigorate that. We need a, a parking plan. We need, and that should include shared parking. And ultimately, the vision for car parking should be to remove car parking from Ojai Avenue when we have another place for those cars. I'm not in favor of increasing car parking, but using, better use of what we have. Because one of the key ways to make the town more pedestrian bicycle friendly is not to keep putting in more and more parking. Then on Ojai, as far as Ojai Day goes, I thought it was great, except for the downtown traffic was absolutely insane. And you would see, you know, among the hundreds and hundreds of cars, you would see some, you know, these brave families trying to negotiate their way safely from the side streets from North Montgomery, you know, North and North Signal coming down. So next year, we absolutely, there's absolutely no reason why all the people driving from out of town can't park at Nordoff. Then they're, they can either be shuttled in or they can walk the Ojai Trail or ride their bike. There has to be some other way. It's on a, the level of traffic on Ojai, I mean, Jimmy, the level of traffic on Ojai Avenue is always unacceptable, except for early in the morning and late at night. Let's see if there's anything else that I want to say. I just, how much I appreciate all the hard work you do here. Thank you very much. Anything you want to ask me?
Okay.
Hello? Did I go crazy?
Thank you for the kind words. This is, as, as the director said earlier, this is.
We're here, right?
This is a bunch of commissioners that are, that are making more deep dives than, than many that I know Kathy Nolan and I have seen in the past. And that means we're going to have longer meetings and chew on the bone a little more every time. But I think we'll wind up making better decisions as a result.
Yeah.
So, absent any other business before the commission, at 9:36, I declare this meeting.